Call this meeting to order, the Rancho Cordova City Council, and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent this evening. Mayor Sander?
Here. We are going to kick this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask our police chief, Matt Tameo, to lead us in that. That will be followed by an invocation, if you wish to remain standing, by Dr. Dan DeShong with River City Christian Church.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we honor and praise you and thank you for our many blessings. Let us never take them for granted. Please give our city leaders encouragement for all the tough decisions they have. Help us to be good citizens and become active in the affairs of government and those that represent us with kindness and grace and due diligence. Let us never sway from moral courage, self-discipline, and love of fair justice. I pray that all of our relationships would be grounded in your love for us. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Matt. Well done. All right, we have a couple of presentations involving new employees. And I think Maria?
Mayor Sander, while they're coming up, can I do the Metro Cable announcement very quickly?
You certainly can.
So this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Friday, February 23rd at 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, February 25th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.
All right, very good. Maria?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Maria Chacon Nisted, Communications and Public Affairs Director. I am pleased to be here this evening to introduce you to a new member of the Communications and Public Affairs Team, Samantha Mott. She's a senior communications officer with us, and she will be focused on community outreach. As you know, we've been doing a lot of community outreach lately, and this will allow our team to have more bandwidth in that area. She also has a lot of skills in other communications functions, including media relations, so she will be doing some of that as well. And I'll let Sam tell you a little bit more about herself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. I'm delighted to be here tonight and to be the newest member of Maria's team. I know a few of you from my time serving on the California Capitol Airshow Board. I've had the wonderful experience being on that board, meeting a lot of the residents already through my work there, and getting to know the city a little bit through that. I've spent the last 10 years working for Sacramento County in social services, doing a lot of crisis communication and community outreach. I spent a little time running a marketing program for SAC International Airport. I am really excited to get to know the residents better, get into the community, and start doing some hard work. Thank you.
Great. Welcome. So Samantha, now you get to sing the traditional "Welcome to Rancho Cordova" song. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council, on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. They're available in the back room. The city clerk is sitting right up here on my right. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called on by me at that point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community residence. Note that under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of this agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be James Garcia, Helen Wellen-Bishaw, Shawna Mandell, and Heidi Moore.
How early did you get here that you knew you were first?
Say again?
Good job queuing up to be first.
You knew you were first. All right, here we go. Start the clock. All right, Larry Leroy Ladd, one of the co-founders of this city along with the likes of Pedro Hernandez and Bob McGarvey. But I'm wearing my Community Adviser Group for Aerojet Superfund Site Issues hat today and presenting you with just this first piece of paper. All the rest of this is for Siri, who is fortunately not here, so I have more time to talk about this one piece of paper. And the topic is toxicity of trichloroethylene, which is the big limiting factor for developing at Aerojet. And before we... So I was told by a specialist in that, who is a politician and an activist, that the key vote in city council is the city councilman in this state with the deepest pockets who's worried that some personal injury attorney is going to get to their funds. And so bearing in mind that in this state, things that happened 30, 40 years ago can wreck institutional havoc. For example, my understanding is, I don't really follow it, but the Capitol Christian Center with what happened on Howe Avenue between 1980 and 1983. You know, you guys are making long-term decisions. And so what I am here to do is to help you make those long-term decisions in terms of the boogeyman of trichloroethylene exposure. So what I've given you is what I give anybody who comes to me and says, "I've been poisoned." And I said, "Okay, here's the genetics of your diagnosis. Go to your oncologist and tell me what genes are involved, and then we'll talk about whether you were poisoned or not." What I'm here to tell you tonight is there is potentially a new gene that in future personal injury litigation may be proof of trichloroethylene exposure. And that is, if you look at the right side of the diagram, there are two red dots. The top red dot says BCR. That stands for Brake Control Region Chromosome 22. How much more time I got? I got a minute. Okay. I need authorization from the highest scientific authority here. You start any scientific conversation with agreement. What's the fact? What everybody agrees with, and then you go from there. So you don't have to say anything that's against the rules, David, but nod wisely if what I'm saying you believe is true. The scientific convention today is the longest chromosome is number one, human chromosome, parochromosomes number one, and the shortest ones are down there at 21, 22. And see, he's nodding wisely. This is not contested. This is the convention for today. And what I am... My position is that when you look... Okay, I had a ballot statement that said for liquid rocket fuel, look for cancer in both kidneys of a baby. And I polled... And for TCE, it's a heart defect that looks like an octopus. And this gene hooks up all those ailments. And we can talk about that later on, because my time is up. But I wanted to introduce the latest findings. Thanks, guys.
Hey Larry, real quick, because you come up here a lot and I... A little bit... Do you see this coming in Rancho?
Oh, yeah. Me personally, my personal opinion? But now you understand, first, my personality is obsessive-compulsive for contamination, right? So Aerojet drives me nuts.
I get it. I get it. You err on the side of caution.
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely. And people asked me that. I said, "Aerojet's a train wreck. It's a slow-motion train wreck." Because you have one regulator who's been responsible for 20 square miles. And what will make it work out is when it's acceptable legally to... I mean, so much of the vapor intrusion problem is just opening your windows when you know it's there. It's way too expensive to detect it. The EPA is working on ways to take a barometer and a radon detector and either turn on whatever it is, and that will make it okay. But, you know, and any good inventor can come up with that. But if it fails, and then somebody shows up with this lymphoma, they're out of business, because some personal injury attorney is going to eat them alive. So that's kind of what's maddening about it, how it's Kafkaesque, is that there are simple solutions, but in the present legal environment, it's not happening. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Garcia, resident at Stone Creek. I'm here to kind of talk about what's happened recently. We had our February 5th meeting that was Zoom-bombed, as was quoted and termed. And there was allegations on it that said that this has been known for a while, that it's been going around, discussed at California League of Cities, other National League of Cities, and California Institute of Cities. So lots of different groups have known about this, and it's been going on for a long period of time. To have no plan and action, I find a little disheartening that we had to sit through that type of a meeting. Had to recess twice in order to come up with a policy on the spot on how to actually handle it. We were limited to one minute of public comment as well due to other things that were happening that night. Then to have a special meeting a week later without Zoom, remote participation, was really offensive to a lot of the community that cannot make it to these meetings. And it just basically destroys our faith in public participation at this point in time. There are other cities within California that are doing it. WesternCity.com has one opinion. "We cannot let hate campaigns upend remote public meetings." That's for Ventura, so they're not. Pacifica Tribute is also talking about it, that we cannot, we will not bow down to these Zoom bombers. So they have policies and procedures in place to help mitigate that. So we can still continue to do Zoom remote public comments or via telephone. Again, even California Cities Organization has ways how to stop hate speech and all of that. So it would be great to have a non-need-jerk reaction and just ending public comment via remote Zoom. It would be great to find another way. Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Helen Wellen-Bishaw, and I live over in the Ofteira Grande. I want to expand on some of the issues that James talked about. I was really disappointed at the last meeting to hear the comments being made that the hate individuals that came in under the guise of various agenda items, that we... That this process by this group has happened in other areas. Everyone that's sitting up there, and even to include Siri, who's not here, you've been doing your job for... You're not rookies at your job. So I was very disappointed that we weren't proactive, and we didn't plan for this. I think it's a very big disservice for the community not to have Zoom access. There's very few people who can make it here at all the meetings. I would believe there are more people that come in under Zoom to just listen to parts and pieces. There are many people who don't have cars. Our public transportation is not pristine like you find on the East Coast, where it hits more of the community other than the Dollop service, which doesn't necessarily get you to a place on time. I think to make an agenda to pass not using... Getting rid of Zoom is a major disservice for the community. I hope that something can be done, because I think Zoom is an integral part of the community. It's used in other platforms the Zoom meetings are, which allow more people to participate in activities that better the community as itself, the environment as itself, and the government as itself. So I think we need to reconsider and come up with a plan to fight the hate crimes. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Shawna Mandell. Following Shawna will be Heidi Moore.
Hey, everybody. Thank you. I'm Shawna. I live in Sunridge Park, part of Anatolia. And I know that you guys are very aware that we in the Elk Grove School District are dealing with a lot of issues with schools. I'm just here today to ask you a two-pronged, like, I guess, just asking for your help. We saw how you guys came out when the Folsom-Cordoba was having talks about schools and secondary schools. And it would just be really nice if we could also see you doing that and for the Elk Grove School District and the board meetings. Garrett, specifically, you were awesome. Like, I was pretty impressed, honestly, with how you came out and had a lot of rebuttals to people in Folsom in their sense that Rancho Cordoba doesn't do a school. I would like to see that with Elk Grove School District, too. I feel like we're doing our part as a parent coalition. Like, we're trying... We're being annoying as we can. We are trying to get attention. I appreciate that we're going to have a meeting soon. And I guess only two of you can go. That was kind of disappointing. I was hoping that we could have something like we did with the Folsom City, where we had all of you and the Folsom City there and parents to talk about it. But if that's not possible, we'll take what we can get. The other thing is busing. The more... I don't have children in middle school yet, so... But they're getting there, fourth grade, soon to be fifth grade. I was really hoping that we could do something about busing. I consistently hear from parents that the people in Rancho Marietta have... They are the last picked up, first dropped off, right? And so people in our area, we have got... My understanding is we've got nine buses. They are the first picked up, the last dropped off, and the first bumped if there's some sort of breakdown. And I feel like I brought it up to a couple of people on the board privately, but I'm here to say it publicly. I'm hoping that we can do something about busing. Even if the city facilitates it and parents pay for it, I feel like parents would. It's a lot cheaper than sending them to private school, which I'm also looking into for my kids than sending them to Albionni and Pleasant Grove. So I'm just... I was hoping that we could do something about busing so that we could have kids not have to have such a long commute. And even if we're not going to go to school anytime for my kids to be able to enjoy it, it'd at least make their life a little bit easier if we had a better busing solution. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Moore, and I really appreciate Shawna and everything she's done for the parents in South Rancho Cordoba. My name, like I said, I'm Heidi. I live in Cabala Ranch, and I'm running for Elk Grove School Board Area 7 in November. And a portion of...
Woo! Let's go!
Thank you. I am excited. And a portion of my area does include South Rancho Cordoba. And so I've been working with Shawna and other members of the parent coalition for more area schools to advocate for the much-needed secondary schools in our area. And these schools have been promised by our district for years. And I have also been working with elected officials and Rancho Cordoba parents on both sides of Douglas to advocate for a new high school in Rancho Cordoba for Rancho Cordoba families within FCUSD. And I do this because I recognize that secondary schools in Rancho Cordoba, regardless of the location or the district, are essential to Rancho Cordoba families and our community. As you know, these new schools will draw new families to our community and increase the property value of our homes. As you may know, South Rancho Cordoba families within EUSD face extreme hardships, as Shawna mentioned, some of them, because our schools are in Elk Grove. With traffic, the trip there can be an hour-around trip, and some families who are unable to carpool are making two, one-hour trips per day. Students who use the district transportation system sometimes have four hours of their day consumed by the bus ride and wait times before and after the bus ride. Families report that they feel that their child's day is consumed by school, often preventing kids from participating in after-school activities and other opportunities. Some families simply can't support their kids in extracurricular activities at all because of the logistics of getting their kids to and from school or the school sites. Additionally, because of severe overcrowding at our assigned secondary schools of Katherine Albionni and Pleasant Grove High School, many students are offloaded to different secondary schools within the district, preventing them from attending school with their peers that they went to school with in elementary school. I am here today asking for your support. I've seen most of you at the FCUSD meetings recently advocating for a new high school in Rancho Cordoba. It has been awesome to see your support for our city and our students. Myself and other parents in EUSD have also felt a bit discouraged that this enthusiasm and support has not been publicly shown for Rancho Cordoba students on our side of Douglas. It often feels like we live on an island. It's clear that Elk Grove doesn't care about what is best for our students. And sometimes it feels that we are not represented in the city of Rancho Cordoba discussions and advocacy. I know that you hope to pull us into a potential new Rancho Cordoba school district, and I do appreciate that. But we need your support and advocacy at our meetings as well. I am asking that you please consider attending one or two of our school board meetings to make public comments. I really feel that this would be impactful and that our community in South Rancho Cordoba would appreciate your help and concern.
Please wrap up your comments.
In advocating for us. Thank you so much. I look forward to hearing from you.
Those are the speaker cards that I have received for this item. In addition, the city clerk's office received two emailed public comments from Bethany Royer and Angel Ball. Those have been distributed to the city council, printed for the public in the back of the council chambers and have been placed on the city's website.
All right, any other public comment?
There's no additional public comment.
Seeing none, we're going to move on to council reports. And Mr. Gatewood, you are up first.
Come in. Three by man. Hold that thought. Make this fast. All right, I had two things. I met with Nancy, who's doing visioning for the city. And we're looking forward to working with council to start setting priorities on what we want to see and what kind of culture we want to build as council members start to transition. We don't want to lose what we have, because this is something very special in this community. The second thing is Linda built the library board. And I now sit on... There's three or four boards that I got put on that I don't have anything to do with but are amazing. Library Board happens to be one of them. They used to have lots of fights, and people were coming screaming. And now you come there, and I'm like, "The budget's done." So just so you guys know, the budget is clear. We have more nights. They've optimized the thing. We have a bus that you can take the light rail now. You can scan books that will download, so you can read books while you're driving. I mean, the things the library is doing now have nothing to do with what I remember library, where you check out a book. It more has to do with how to integrate the community, which I think is just cool as library starts to transition. And I just want to thank Linda for making it so they're always on budget, because they... Listen, when you first got here, I heard the horror stories. They used to tell me how you couldn't even pay for stuff, and it was crazy. Now, we're... Not only did we hit budget, but we took 130 of our savings just to get cool stuff, like we're upgrading our computer systems and our Wi-Fi and our WAPs, which is wireless networks, and it's just an amazing thing. So those are the two meetings I had. And once again, thank you, Linda.
All right, Linda, you're up.
Well, I appreciate the comments, Garrett, but you can owe it all to Rivka Sass, the lady who was the director that we hired to take the place of the director who had been there for a long time. And Rivka is truly the one who created miracles. A lot of us attended the Rancho Cordoba luncheon on Friday to hear our chief make a wonderful speech about his time in the sheriff's department and his enthusiasm for being here in Rancho Cordoba. On Saturday night, the Grange had a crab feed. It was like the first crab feed in four or five years. And I really, as things happened, the group that I took was like 30% of the tickets that they sold, which was remarkable. But I was really pleased that all the kids wanted to go, and everybody had a great time. And the people who support the Grange are really absolutely wonderful group of people. They're fun to be around. They know Rancho Cordoba, because many of them are not just natives, but their families and their families and their families are native. On Monday last week, I also attended a presentation by the Folsom-Cordoba School District on their early learning programs. And it's quite clear that Folsom-Cordoba is doing a great job of teaching our little kids, people from TK, pre-K, preschool, all the way to the eighth grade. And I think the issue really... And I wrote that all up, and I shared that with my colleagues and senior staff. And it really seems that the issue is getting that to expand to the high school level. A lot of it goes up through the middle schools, but it just needs to be expanded to the high school level. And I would ask that we adjourn tonight. I mean, unfortunately, there are so many people, groups of people, et cetera, that we could adjourn in memory of tonight. But specifically, Dr. Lloyd Johns. And most of us met Lloyd Johns when he was the president at SAC State quite some time ago, before Dr. Girth. And he was there for a long time. He then left and was the president of GoToLet University for the Deaf in Washington, DC. But when he came back to Sacramento, he was a trumpet player. He'd always been a trumpet player. And he played trumpet in some of the bands that entertained us at the Veterans Day and Memorial Day celebrations. And the sweet thing was, his obituary, his wife actually fell in love with him because he was the trumpet player in the dance band. And so I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Lloyd Johns.
Very good. Donald?
So I wanted to address the comments that came about Elk Grove Unified. So Garrett, hopefully you all can hear what I'm saying. Trying to talk to the two of you. So, one, I'd be happy to meet with you before the meeting that we're going to have. But to clarify a couple of things about that meeting, that's an extension of our normal two-by-two that we have, where two school board members, our superintendent, two of us, and our city manager meet regularly with school districts to talk about different issues. And we're expanding it to invite some members of the public to join that meeting. That's why the entire council isn't coming to it. The difference, just to clarify, between what's going on in Elk Grove Unified and what's going on in Folsom-Cordoba, one, there's no political opposition to building a high school in Elk Grove. I think we've talked about this before. But the thing to remember about Elk Grove is the school district and everybody want to build a school. The way that they've drawn the districts and the attendance areas doesn't justify building a school today. Doesn't justify building a school today in Folsom-Cordoba, either. The conversation that's happening in Folsom-Cordoba today is about when they build a high school, where's it going to go? And they're going to build one of them. In Elk Grove, there's no question it's going in Rancho Cordoba. That was decided... There's a developer that really wanted it to be in the county. And the school board and the superintendent, for the most part, have said where it's going and what development it's going in, in Rancho Cordoba. So the conversations are really, really different when we're talking about the two. And one is the school board in Folsom-Cordoba is going to, at some point very soon, decide, is it going in Folsom or is it going here? And from what they've said, they're only going to build one of them. That's the controversy. That's what we're advocating for. There's nobody in Elk Grove Unified that's saying, "We're not getting the next high school." The question is, when are we getting the next high school? And that has more to do with money, growth, and how many kids we have to serve. And so Elk Grove is also, in my opinion, way further along in the planning process of the school. They've already, I believe they've already hired the architect. So they've moved way further along than what Folsom-Cordoba is doing. But again, the conversations couldn't be more different. But I'd be happy to sit down with you ahead of that meeting and make sure that the city manager and us are all on the same page in making sure that we're asking the right questions when we get to that meeting and that the school district is prepared to answer what questions you might have. But I do want to just clarify, like, they're... These two discussions couldn't be more different than what we're seeing in the other places. So to also, I'd like to address the other comment around the lack of Zoom access. Just looked it up. And I guess there was an example of two cities that are saying that they'd like to keep Zoom. I don't know if they still are or how they're doing it. it, but there are 1,573 cities in this state. And every city that this has happened to, this is what we've, this is what has happened, is we've restricted Zoom access to listen only, period. All across the state, I don't know one city that's pulled it off that has some sort of magic technology that keeps people from being able to make good public comments while not allowing the bad public comments to come in. For those of you who are complaining still about it, you heard from every one of us at the last meeting that we didn't want to do this. We agree in the value of using Zoom. However, there's not a way to conduct the business of the city and still allow remote access for the public. That being said, the air district meets later this week. I'll just remind folks, it is now check before you burn, so make sure you're doing that, even on these rainy days. And the only other thing is I, we had our first organizing or steering committee meeting for my cap-to-cap team for the community resources team. I roped in Stefan Heisler to be one of the team leads this year in working with, it's not Simon and Company anymore, it's Covina Smith and, Simon, I think that's it now. Yeah. And they'll be staffing us again in DC, but our, our team's already up to, I think, like 40 people. So anybody's going to cap-to-cap, our, our teams are already starting to, to write their papers. That's it for me.
All right, very good. Siri is absent tonight, so I'll just go ahead with my report. Had a bunch of meetings. Interesting ones would include Sac City Sewer District, where we're having continued discussions on how to best deal with infill and fees and try to promote more infill growth along old commercial corridors. It's a real challenge. For our case, that would be Folsom Boulevard, probably Sunrise. You could also argue Coloma. All have those challenges against infill where all these different districts want to charge fees. Secog is also working. There's going to be on that topic. I'm trying to coordinate the two. They are going to host a, like a statewide symposium and discussion of what other people in the state are doing, trying to knock down the barriers to infill development. So it's a very big deal for, for Rancho Cordova, obviously with Folsom Boulevard in particular. Linda and I had a couple of meetings with the county about the Hazel Interchange that the, the city council authorized. It's a, a challenging scenario, which I think at this point in the game, we're basically arguing and discussing aesthetics and how we might-
Lipstick on the pig.
How we might make a, a rather unusual structure a little more attractive and less negatively impactful for Rancho Cordova as they rebuild the Hazel Interchange. And if anybody wants further information on that, I think council's well informed, but you know, in the public, we have maps and diagrams and photo sims that we can share. I attended a, well, I can say this two different ways. I attended a PGA tournament in Phoenix. It was very exciting. It was the Waste Management-
Golf was exciting.
Golf tournament, yeah, right? Except I wasn't there for golf. I was there for a sustainability forum that happened because Waste Management was sponsoring the PGA event. So, you know, I was in meetings all, not all day, but majority of the day and, you know, discussions, really fascinating stuff about what cities are doing elsewhere in terms of sustainability. And then they let us loose to go watch the incredible golf. And the temperature dropped to about 45 degrees and it started pouring rain. So I saw, I'm not a golf fan anyway, so this is actually no big loss. It's just kind of funny. I saw exactly one golf club swing and hit a ball. And it went up on a green just beautifully, and you know, as a non, well, not really a golfer, I could admire the fact that that was a remarkable piece of athletic accomplishment. But then it poured, and it got really cold, and everyone ran away. So that was my experience of the golf tournament. But the sustainability conference that Waste Management puts on there at the same time is really quite fascinating. We might want to consider, this was NLC paid for this, this trip. Well, actually, I guess Waste Management paid for the trip. But this might be something we want to consider in future years if we have sustainability goals in California, because I was quizzed extensively about the California approach to sustainability, both the good and the bad. Because the rest of the country, if you're not in California, is kind of fixated on how crazy we can be in how we approach things. Like, they wanted explanations on, how come you banned plastic bags and your plastic use went way up or in the landfill went way up as contributed from plastic bags, right? Questions like that repeatedly. So, but there was really good insights of what people were doing in other jurisdictions. And let's see, finally, my Acadaca team is about to compete. I think this is the seventh year I've coached them, sixth year I've coached them. So next Saturday, we're going to go out there and pummel all the other local schools in Sacramento County, and it's gonna-
Is that the term you want to use for an athletic or a-
An academic-
An academic decathlon.
I kind of like the contrast of it, right? Because it's a battle of the brains, but-
You're going to beat them all up.
I don't know.
You're going to obliterate them.
Give me some, oh, there's some language, yeah.
Murder them dead.
Give me, give me some better-
In the name of Jesus.
Give me some, give me some better-
Thank John Viani coming through.
Give me some better verbiage, and I'll use that. But it is, it is a lot of fun, and it's just fun to see young kids engaged in academic competition. All right, with that, I-
Does our sewer district have a lot to say about this proposed rate increase that we all got in the mail?
Yeah, that's, you mean the sewer rate increase?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see, what shorthand can I remember about that?
I mean, because it, when Dan was still on the board, it went up dramatically in order to pay for all that-
Yes.
Re, reengineering-
An entire new plant, practically, right?
Yeah.
That the state required us to do, yeah. At one point, it was estimated 2.2 billion, I think it came in at 1.9 or something. It was over 2 billion. That's what we thought at the time. Well, they thought at the time. I wasn't on the board. Well, there is a update in the, in the sewer fee, then you've already gotten the mailing. I didn't realize it was out yet. The major contributor to that are the staples that the district needs to operate. And the number one thing listed there, believe it or not, is chlorine. There is a chlorine shortage, and the district has to use a lot of it. And there's a limited number of manufacturers, and the price is like quadrupled, quadrupled in the past, say, two and a half years. And so some reserves were used to accommodate it, but now it's getting to the point that we can't really afford to buy the chlorine we need to operate. So that's one factor. But there's a number of other little things like that. I think on the flip side, there hasn't been a significant rate increase in a dozen years before that. And on the transmission side, I think it was 17 years before that. So it's basically been level, 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 level for 17 years. Now there's an increase. And there will, and as it's staged, there'll be an increase over a couple of years. It's not really that unlike our drainage situation, where there was no increase forever in that fee, and all of a sudden, in our, in that case, though, we looked at it and realized, oh my goodness, there's a problem.
Except that we really do remember before the two districts were combined, like I said, when Dan was on the board, that they had to pay for all the new, all the new construction and reengineering and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So that was a significant amount of money.
That's been 12 years ago now, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, something, some number like that.
Yeah.
That was about the, that was the last time there was a substantial increase.
Yeah.
I want to say it was, I want to say it was the year I got elected.
Could be. That's about right. Did you go down to the hearing when we were all testifying in front of the water board?
No. I was not uncounseled then.
Yeah. So that probably happened right before, right before you were.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's-
Just wondered.
I didn't know where that was until my son started playing in a basketball league down in South Sac, and we'd go by that facility now. When I first drove by it, I'm like, is that like a, like a resort or something? Like-
Of his kind. For birds.
Those are some, those are some very nice Spanish-style roofs and everything out there. I like it.
Saw that wildlife preservation around it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a, if you, if you drove by it, you, you might wonder if that's some sort of like wilderness retreat with no wilderness in it.
On the other side, there's a dairy farm, a historic dairy farm that was there, that the district now has nonprofit partners operating, sort of as a field trip destination, right?
Yeah.
To talk about sustainability.
We were driving by, and my kids literally looked over, and they're like, what is that? And as we got close to them, like, oh, I know what that is. And I started to-
All right, item number eight, city manager's report. Micah, you got anything for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. One, just a reminder, reminder that we are a host to a ballot box location. So over the next couple of weeks, we have a ballot box in the lobby of our one-stop permit center to, if people want to turn in their ballots. We'll also be a vote center, so March 2nd through the 4th, from 9 to 5, you can come in and cast your votes. And then on the 5th, we're open 7 to 8 for those, for that center. So lots of voting happening here over the next couple of weeks. So it is. And then just the other thing, want to recognize Persephone Riley, who's here in this dais area with us and the unsung hero who got her certified municipal clerk designation.
Yay. Nice job.
She does lots of the good behind-the-scenes thing that makes things happen up here and removes chairs when we need chairs removed and other things. So recognize her for receiving her CMC. And that's it.
I'm also going to amend my, amend my report. The, the wonderful citizens we had here talking about the Elk Grove Unified School District. I think, Garrett, you went and talked to them immediately, but I think there is probably, and I don't disagree with anything you said, Donald, there probably is more that we could do on that front in terms of talking to our residents and talking to that district about the importance of it. I don't know that we can change the timeline with regard to the Elk Grove School District, but we have just had a lot of public, formal joint meetings with Folsom, you know, Folsom City Council and joint meetings with that school board. Then there's been no equivalent on the Elk Grove side. So I can totally see where the perception would come from, that we're far more active on one side.
And that's what I was sharing with them, though, that the difference really is, like, like, in my entire time on city council, we've never had a joint meeting with Folsom Cordova until they were deciding between a school not here or here, right? And it was coming down to that, that, the, the only controversy with Elk Grove is growth didn't keep up with what they expected. So there's not enough kids. There's enough kids for a junior high. There's not enough kids for a high school yet. And they have, I mean, if you look at the capacity charts that we were looking at for Folsom Cordova, and you look at them in Elk Grove, a bunch of their high schools are under-enrolled. So even getting justified for the new high school over there, and trust me, that basketball loop that we're doing right now for our son, the fact that I can drive by three other high schools in Elk Grove in less than 10 minutes drives me insane when I know it takes 30 minutes from my house to get to the one that we go to. But you can go by from that school and get to three other ones in less than 10 minutes. Now, that's, it's a Saturday in the middle of the day, and there's not as much traffic. I get it. But there is no controversy that everyone in Elk Grove wants the next high school to be here. So if we were trying to convince them to not put it, I won't name the developer, but there was a place halfway between here and the vineyard that had a site that they want to have a high school on, and they pretty much said, that's not going to happen. It's going to come here because this is where the growth is. So the convincing anybody to do anything in Elk Grove, like, when the numbers are the numbers, they'll build a high school. That, that's the frustrating part. But the conversation that we're having with Folsom Cordova, like, don't forget, like, this doesn't mean, like, when they decide what school they're building, that they're going to go, like, that they have their plans, they're going to state to get the other half of their bond, and they're going to build a high school. They're just deciding, someday when we have it, it's going there, or it's going to be here. That's why we're, that's why we're advocating.
And in an effort not to get too deep on an item, not on the agenda, but the, we do have a workshop coming up likely next week where this will be a part of that discussion. And so I think we'll let the folks who came know to keep their eyes peeled for the agenda for coming out next week. So we're likely to have a conversation about this next week.
And if we could follow up with them to have what the pre-meeting that I was talking about with Siri and I and you, and make sure that what they were hoping to get answered, that we're asking the questions ahead of time, that we're not showing up there, like the busing thing. Like, a lot of times, we've shown up to those meetings, and it's like, they have very finite questions, and it's like, oh, I didn't look that up. So if we can be prepared for as much of that as we possibly can, hopefully we can get the, these things answered. But again, like, I just, I, I just want everyone to understand, like, as the person that's been on the two-by-two for the last 11 years, what Elk Grove has, has been willing to entertain even, like, when I got on this council, they don't build high schools unless they're building a high school, a middle school, the whole thing, and they have enough kids for it. They have completely backed off of that idea in proposing to do a phased-in school. That's something that 10 years ago, they wouldn't even have dared considered, you know? So there's, which is another reason why that school's probably going to get built a long time before the Folsom Cordova school is going to.
And on the other, the other comment Donald made about the Zoom bombing, I don't think anyone in this council was happy that we had to suspend Zoom commentary. It's totally against what we would like to be able to do as a city. And in discussions with Cal Cities and National League of Cities, no one has an absolute answer to this. And there are no magic solutions that can sort it out. We had been briefed on a strategy beforehand, but that doesn't necessarily prepare you for the shock of the moment. So any fault there lies with me for not being, you know, 110% prepared for a surprise assault in the middle of a city council meeting of that veracity. I do think we handled it reasonably well when it happened. The choice we'd have, if we go back to Zoom, is whether or not to tolerate that sort of commentary on a regular basis to, to, to the point where we would repeatedly cut it off, and the risk of losing an entire agenda's activities because someone would object to me improperly ending, or the clerk, or the city attorney, whoever, improperly ending public comment, and then the entire meeting is invalidated because some judge says you cut off public comment inappropriately. So it's, it's a very, it's a very complicated situation. There is no magic bullet, but all of us are frankly looking for it. Okay, with that, I think we're going to go on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium. By the time the agenda will be heard. Are there any items the council wishes to pull from the consent calendar?
Seeing none, unless there's public comment, then we should, then I will move approval of the consent calendar after we take public comment.
Do we have any public comment?
We have two speaker cards for item 9.4 and 9.5.
Okay.
Do you want to take those speakers?
What we could do is approve the rest, and then hear out comments on 9.4 and 9.5.
Okay, then I'll amend the motion to 9.1, 2, 3, 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pulipati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. That's unanimous vote. Okay, public comment on 9.4 and 9.5.
9.4 is Larry Ladd.
Do you want to read the title into the record?
For 9.4, the title is "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with United States Department of Energy to Receive Grant Funds in the Amount of $138,900 for the purchase and installation of additional electric vehicle chargers at City Hall."
Hi, Larry.
Hey there. Just want to make a quick rah-rah for electric-driven vehicles on the basis of public health. Now, I get all kinds of heat from this from all my relatives back in the Midwest, but believe me, it's real. You know, I spent 20 years looking for people poisoned by their water supply, and I guarantee you, just like when I was an ambulance driver, if you went to a bad accident, somebody was drunk. And if you find a cancer cluster associated with bad water, it's along the highway. It's the combination of the water and the air pollution that is the most prominent clinical expression. So electric vehicles saves lives, people. It's not on the eyewitness news, but they, they will continue to save lives in terms of air pollution.
Thank you, Larry. And comment on 9.5?
9.5 is Helen Willen-Bachar.
Hi, Helen Willen-Bachar. Well, 9.5, I'm curious, because it falls under the affordable housing development. Do all the other phases at the veterans' area fall under affordable housing? And then if so, does the affordable housing, is it part of the numbers that are counted towards Rancho Cordova? I, I question this because we talk about affordable housing, the state mandate for SB 330, and how do the numbers that go into this affordable housing affect the SB 330 requirement? And the affordable housing is, if it doesn't go against that, is it because it's a selected group of people that can only apply for the affordable housing under the VA? Do you understand my questions?
I do. Do you want, you want to take a stab at that?
Thank you, Helen. And I think the, the answer, and I'll, I'll look to Stefan, who's in the back of the room if I don't get this right, but yes, all of the affordable housing, if you build affordable housing, counts towards our RENA numbers, which I think is the numbers that you're referring to as our allocation. And so the development at Mather Veterans Village does count towards our RENA production numbers. So it is affordable.
Okay, so a question is, when we have people coming in wanting to put the affordable housing in, in certain areas, does, is affordable housing restricted to different areas, where we have to have so much in different parts of the city? Or is it the combination of the whole city for affordable housing? Because affordable housing is, depending on the price range you put out there, that's affordable housing, is what I understand.
I think I would suggest that, you know, we have Stefan to, can take Helen offline and have a conversation about this.
It all, it all adds up into the same category. All right, that gives, leaves us items 9.4 and 9.5. If there's no other public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
So that was Budge.
Yeah.
Yes. And-
Terry.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Pulipati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. That vote was unanimous. We are moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council- Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
Yes, we have public comment for items 10.2 and 10.3.
Okay, let's hear them.
Then I will move approval of item 10.1, unless somebody on the council wants to prove it, that wants to pull it.
Second.
Made in, motion made and seconded for item 10.1.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. So that's unanimous vote. That leads us back to 10.2 and 10.3 with public comment.
So we'll start with 10.2, Tara Colvinbach. Following Tara will be James Garcia, Helen Wayland-Bachar.
Do you want to read the item in?
Yes, the item is "An Ordinance Amending Sections 10.50.010 and 10.50.020 of Chapter 10.50 of Title 10 of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code to Establish Enforcible Speed Limits on the Roads Listed in the Ordinance."
David, did you open the public hearing?
I did.
Hi, I'm Tara Colvinbach, and I'm from Stone Creek. Mayor and council members, I am okay with reducing speed limits, like, with this is proposed. The problem that I'm having is that I'm right on the corner of Baroque and Kristum, and I see all the people that run the stop sign, and I've seen stop light runners. And I'm worried about enforcement, like, so we changed the speed limit. Is it really going to make any difference? Because the police have so many other things to do that are more important. So we have, we have a situation where my next-door neighbor walks his dog, and he saw this EV go straight through the stop sign on our street. And there's all these kids that go across to the park over there, straight through, didn't even slow down, whatever. So he saw where he turned, and he's right in our community. And so when he was walking his dog, he saw the guy was outside, his garage door is open, whatever. He says, "Do you realize you blew through that stop sign?" And he said, "Well, the police, no, I've got an EV. I can't stop for stop signs because I reduce my battery life."
That's good. There's a new one.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard in my life. Sorry, thank you, Tara. I needed to tell you guys because I couldn't believe that someone in our community would even believe that, and he was serious, okay?
So anyway, I'm just concerned about enforcement. That's my concern. Thank you.
I think our chief of police knows that, that we wouldn't accept that.
Oh, my goodness.
As an answer.
That's an extra.
That is great.
That is great.
That's great. I do like that. James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just have some also concerns, similar to what Tara has mentioned, because of that, I would really like to know if there was a detailed report on the ETS that was performed, given that Zimphandel Drive, South International, had no recommended changes whatsoever. The changes were for north of Folsom Boulevard to reduce it, because it is a pure residential neighborhood from Folsom Boulevard all the way up to Sunrise Boulevard on Zimphandel Drive, down to 25 miles an hour. Really support that. But if you look at the whole distance on Zimphandel further south, it goes from Folsom Boulevard to White Rock, which is all kind of freeway, a little bit of other stuff at 35 miles an hour. Then at White Rock to International, it's 40 miles an hour. Again, business is there. Then you have 45 miles an hour all the way out to the city limits on Zimphandel. We've had two fatalities recently on Zimphandel in that section, right there at International and Zimphandel, as well as, oh, can't exactly remember the name of the street now. I believe it might have been Tintefina just recently. So want to know why that section didn't get in any looks at. Because again, you're having reduction of 10 miles an hour off of, on Spotto Drive, which is a nice little park area off of Zimphandel. And also five miles an hour reduction off of White Rock between Zimphandel and Sunrise. So we went from 45 to 40 there. But again, nothing on the major part of Zimphandel where we have a new retirement home going in, we have a Goddard School, we have a shopping center, we have affordable, well, we have apartments going in that are being built right now. We have all the housing, all their residential next to it. So that's where the safety factor is, and that's what we need to be able to control. So just recommend that we possibly look at Zimphandel a little more, along with all the other areas. So, because Sunrise Boulevard also was not looked at. If you looked at Douglas and Sunrise, there was motorcycle fatality there as well. So our major thoroughfares are becoming major hazards, and that's what we need to look at and have better enforcement. And hopefully we can control these people that are not following the law. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Helen?
I agree with everything that James said. It does look like the, I mean, the major thoroughfares seem to be like we turn a blind's eye to. I, I think that we need to do more enforcement on those areas. And like, I came to a meeting one night, and there was a tractor trailer on the part of Zimphandel it shouldn't have been on. It should have taken another route. So I think that enforcement needs to be in the area of the new growth, not just like the old growth. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Albert, do you want to comment on the speed survey process and, and how speed limits are adjusted?
I'd be happy to. Good evening, Mayor Sander and City Council Members, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the speed surveys are set, the requirement on how those are performed is based on California Vehicle Code, and our studies are done where we survey the speeds actually out on the street, and we identify the, the speed limit is set based on the 85th percentile, meaning 85% of those cars go slower than that speed limit, than that speed, and 15% are going above that. There's a frequency at which we have to resurvey these roads. So we do go through every single road in the city, or at least collectors and arterials. Smaller roads, like minor residential, have what's called a prima facie speed of 25 miles an hour and do not have, so minor residential do not have to be surveyed on a regular basis. All collectors, arterials, and similar roads do need to be surveyed on a regular basis, and we do cycle through all of those roads in the city. So the roads that are before council tonight are the specific roads that are due to be surveyed, and that allows them to be enforceable by our police department. And that's one of the keys. If we don't do these surveys, then they are not enforceable speed limits, which could reduce the efficacy of the enforcement component of managing speeds through here. So some of the roadways that are mentioned, have been mentioned by the public, we are keeping an eye on those. We do have plans to include, include those in future surveys, especially as we see the environment changing. And I think that some of the members of public have mentioned Zimphandel south of International specifically, where we have new businesses coming in, we have a new signal that's going to be constructed by the developer at the intersection of Baroque. And so those are all reasons that we might actually survey one of the roads even earlier than what's mandated by the state. And Edgar, can you give us some more information on when we're scheduled to do our next survey?
Yeah, definitely, Albert. So as Albert mentioned, we do have a frequency on, on the road segments that, that we cycle through. So the 40 segments that we currently have on the tonight's list are the ones that are expiring this year, so, which is why we're proposing. But we are going to be cycling through on an annual basis some of the remaining roads, which are some of the segments that the council, the residents have identified. So we currently have about approximately a dozen streets that are on the list for next spring of 2025 to, to bring back to council.
And I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but we have had situations where we do the survey, and instead of being able to lower the speed, we actually have to raise it. That's also a consequence of the state law.
That can be a consequence of the, of the state law.
They do the survey thinking, oh, we can get the speed down, but so we don't have full control over what speed we post. We have to follow the state mandate. But if that survey shows that you got 30% above that, whatever that percentile is, then you've actually got to raise your speed limit.
And in that case, you're faced with either raising the speed limit or making it unenforceable by our police, both which can be very challenging.
Right. So there's a little strategy, maybe, beyond our regularly programmed schedule. For example, if you're adding a light, that's probably going to drive down the speed on that segment, that might be a good time to do a survey, as opposed to a long stretch that people are, you know people are speeding on. And if you do a survey, you're not going to be able to lower it, you probably have to raise it.
Very true. And a good example of that is there are roadways we've identified to perform additional traffic calming, including Baroque. And we would expect that we would do another survey following that traffic calming effort that we've presented to the city council in the past, and we're hopeful to get, to get different results based on that.
Okay. Do we make, do we have a schedule of when we do those speed surveys, like, what year we're doing, what street?
It's based on the, it's the rolling rate at which they expire. So we do do them many years as needed or where required. So it's really based upon when each of those surveys are expiring.
I could.
Mayor Sander, I'd also like to just acknowledge that there were three public comments that were sent in for this item, 10.2. Marilyn Metzger, Valerie Knippschild, and James Garcia.
Could you really quickly speak to the, the comments that were made around, like, specifically, like, there was an accident over here. I mean, how is that captured in there? Because I, I mean, anecdotally, there, there are accidents all over the city. I mean, we have, you know, you could look at Chasing Coloma with, with the way that's been designed and some of the struggles that we've had there, but that's not really what you're doing here. You're going out, you're doing surveying, you're, you're, you're seeing what speeds are going, how many cars are coming by at certain times, right? It's not police reports and some of those things. Or, or is that a portion of what you're using?
For the speed survey itself is purely based on the, the speed of the reasonable person going through there is largely what that's based on. But absolutely, the, all of these are components of how we track and monitor the safety of the city's transportation network. And so we look at speeds, we also look at accident history, and all of those alike give us the ability to focus on where there might be a hotspot and how we can take the three-pronged approach of engineering, enforcement, and education to, to identify those hotspots and figure out what we can do to make them as safe as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, just to cover the enforcement piece a little bit, I don't, if you were at Chief Tomayo's presentation on, on Friday, he did mention that we did add two motor traffic officers this year as the last, part of the last budget process. So we are adding resources to the enforcement of those different pieces as well along the way.
Yeah, I, I'll be happy to move the items. I will say that of the people ever that have called me to say, you know, "It's dangerous in front of my house, I want more cops there, I want a speed bump, I want, you know, something," almost every one of those people over the last 11 years that have called me and got me on the phone and talked to me about this, within three months, got a ticket near their house. For doing exactly what, and, and I will say, those are local elected officials in, in this city, in this region that live here. And I'm, I'm just throwing it out there that almost every person that says, "I need more cops around my house, people are driving crazy," and then they admit to me that they got a ticket. So whenever that's been brought up, and I brought it up to our chiefs at the time...
That's very funny.
Always, within about three months, somebody's gotten a ticket. With that, I will move items 10.2 and 10.3.
Second. We still have additional public comment for 10.3.
Oh, would you? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So moving on to 10.3, we've got James Garcia, and we have Helen Wayland-Bachar.
Why don't you just move approval, just move approval of 10.2?
We can do that if you wish. Do you want to modify your motion for 10.2?
Sure.
I want to close the public hearing on 10.2.
Second.
For each item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. And now we're at public comment on 10.3.
So for 10.3, the item is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova Amending Title 2: Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.30, Planning Commission to Incorporate Additional Qualifications to At-Large Members."
Okay. Hi, James Garcia, Stone Creek. Have a couple of concerns with this one, brought it forth before, is that since the planning commission is made up of seven members, five of which are appointed by each and every one of the council members and two at large, there's enough of a developer influence there that, again, it makes it seem more like we're a city for the developer, by the developer, and only for the developer and not the people. That was kind of something my dad threw out, so I wanted to throw that in there. But I also have a concern because I try to look at the ordinance to make sure all the qualifications were done right. And unfortunately, the ordinance, as posted on the agenda site, is the one for item 10.2 that we just approved and not 10.3. So I don't know what the ordinance says, so I don't know if I would actually agree with it. But I feel, though, that each of the planning commissioners should be pointed out as residing in the district of the council member who appointed them. And then the two at large should be at large, again, throughout the whole city. So I, I don't think we should do this because there's enough of a chance to have the developer qualification in there by each and every one of you. And again, unfortunately, I cannot say yes or no, more so because the ordinance is not there. Thank you.
I just verified it is, in fact, 10.2 is posted under 10.3. I don't know if that's a substantial issue.
I think we should continue 10.3. Is mine, no?
Okay, I would propose that we, we take public comment and probably continue it. Go ahead, Helen.
I agree with what James talked about is, and I've talked to different council people. I believe that the, each council person that elects a person to the planning commission, that person should come from the district they represent. That is a fair and equitable way to make sure that the planning commission is, understands the entire community. The two at-large positions, you know, they're at large, so it's where, whatever you want, wherever you want to put them. But I don't think any district should have more than two representatives. That way, we will ensure the two at-large positions, we don't have three representatives in the areas where we have a lot of the builders that seem to be the people who have, get their ways versus the community. Because a lot of these meetings, when there's hot issues, mainly the Stone Creek area, they're pretty vocal about what they don't like. But I believe that the planning commission should be the same as what we've done under the districting, where the representatives will be from the area that they represent. I believe this planning commission folks should also be that, but no, no particular district should have more than two representatives. Thank you.
In addition, there were two additional emailed public comments from Belinda Rianda and Jim Garcia.
Okay, I think we should probably leave the public hearing open on this one, but I am open for a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
Is all that in order?
Yeah, it looks like the ordinance itself was, the track changes or the exhibits are correct, but the ordinance might have been from the 10.2. So we'd like to take that.
For clarity, we'd rather do it, do it the other way. Okay, we'll do a roll call on the continuation.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye. Okay, and then I'm going to take up item 11.2 out of order, because I think we can dispense of that rather quickly, and then we will come back to 11.1. So this is a public hearing item. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to read the subject, 11.2.
Public hearing to receive protest to the proposed stormwater utility one fee increase and a resolution to submit the question to a vote of the property owners for approval of the proposed stormwater utility one fee increase.
So I move that we continue this item to the 4th of March.
If we have public comment, we have to take that first.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, there is.
That's what I thought.
Can you open the public hearing?
I'm skipping the staff report, sorry.
The, the public hearing for this item?
You said to give it again next time, so.
The public hearing from this item was opened on February 5th and continues to stay open. We have 11.2, we have Larry Ladd and Darryl Langwell.
All right, Larry.
Thanks for taking my public comment on this, guys, because I may not be here on the Fourth. Just wanted to, when it comes to storm drains, I helped badger Dahlia about that, so I'm partly responsible for this. And, and I just wanted to throw in, because, you know, I may not be here the Fourth, is what I was badgering about is, I was told by the regulators in 1982 with the El Nino in 8283, they, because of the start of environmental regulation, they stopped the flow out of Buffalo Creek, and it basically constipated Buffalo Creek, and the water raised so high from Aerojet effluent that it flowed into the Folsom South Canal. It helped end the argument and the demand for the peripheral canal and all what was planned at that time. So, again, as a geography, don't estimate, don't underestimate what the big bad wolf can do if a storm resonates with a drainage. And I strongly encourage you to be the, the little pig that builds the house of bricks and not the one of straw.
Thank you, Larry. Darryl?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Darryl Langwell from the Vineyards neighborhood. Stormwater drain is just critical for the entire city. A properly maintained and operating system is essential. Over the last several years, million, the council has given million dollars, millions of dollars for a swimming pool, millions of dollars for a softball complex, millions of dollars for other various things that benefit portions of the community. The stormwater system will, is beneficial to the entire community. I would like to see more of the major H money spent on necessities and not niceties. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl.
That's all the public comment that we have for item 11.2.
All right, we will have the report at the next meeting, March 4th. There's no objection to that, in which case, was a motion already made, Linda?
Yep.
Was there a second?
So who made the motion?
Linda moved to continue.
I am willing to second this. I do want to clarify that my position on this, because it is my understanding that to, even to continue this item takes at least three of us. And two of us have already expressed our opposition to this item. But I will be seconding the motion and voting in favor of the tabling of, or I'm sorry, the continuing of this item, only for the purpose of allowing my colleague, who is not here tonight, who said that she was willing to vote in favor of this, to have the opportunity to do it. So I'm, I'm reluctantly going to vote in favor of this continuance so that we don't waste tens of thousands of dollars in staff work in preparing this item because we'll just have to do the whole thing again. So just because of her absence shouldn't rob her the ability to weigh in on this, because it only takes a majority of us to pass this item, but if we do not continue it tonight, we have to start the entire thing over.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
No.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander?
Aye.
And I'd just like to remind the clerk, I would, I want to see my comments of this item in the minutes, please. Thank you.
All right, that's going to take us back to item 11.1. If the clerk could read that subject, please.
Mineshaft digital billboard signs, conditional use permit, minor design review and operating agreement, mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to Article 5 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Project PLND 08220047. I just wrote through the mineshaft address, 2300, is that the right address? 2300 Mineshaft Lane.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor Sander and city councilmembers. Arlene Grandoson Jones, senior planner from the planning department. The project before you, as the clerk stated, is the Mineshaft Digital Freeway Science Project proposed at 2300 Mineshaft Lane. The project applicant is the Cordova Community Council, and the project location is an approximately 12-acre site along Folsom Boulevard and U.S. Highway 50. The project site is surrounded by open spaceland for the Folsom South Canal and close to industrial uses to the south and west. The parcel is mostly paved with designated parking areas and contains the Mineshaft Building, which is used for community events, including the Heartstopper's haunted house. The applicant is seeking the approval of a conditional use permit, design review, and operating agreement for two digital freeway signs. The site is within the Folsom Boulevard planning area of the general plan and is zoned general The site is also within the digital freeway signs overlay, which regulates the installation and use of digital freeway signs within the specific areas. I know there's a lot of text here, so I'm just going to summarize it for everyone. According to the applicant, the development of these two digital freeway signs has the following project objectives: to develop a revenue source for the Cordova, excuse me, Cordova Community Council, to continue to serve the community, provide a productive use for a currently underutilized property, and provide the city of Rancho Cordova and community groups with a medium for communication to area residents. So you can see, the project proposes two signs, each with two sign area displays measuring 20 feet by 60 feet, so about 1,200 square feet. The two signs are approximately 2,700 feet from each other at either end of the project site. You can see in Area 1 and in, in Area 2. The west sign, which will be close to the proposed future Rancho Cordova Parkway-U.S. 50 interchange, shown in this rendering as the gray bar in the picture, will have a maximum height of 70 feet. And the east sign here is proposed at a maximum height of 60 feet. This project was previously presented to the Signs Ad Hoc Committee in January 2023 and City Council in March 2023. Following feedback received from the Signs Ad Hoc Committee, the applicant reduced the height of the digital sign from 100 feet for both signs to 70 feet for the western sign and 60 feet for the eastern sign. Terms of design, the proposed signs are consistent with specific design standards outlined in the zoning code, in that each sign structure does not add stylistic or architectural detailing to avoid any unnecessary height or width. And each sign will have a monopole that would support two electronic displays angled to provide line of sight for highway travelers. Now, along with the proposed signs, this also includes a draft operating agreement, which outlines the requirements of installation, ownership, maintenance, standards, use rights, and other operating procedures for the signs. The applicant is also requesting, through the operating agreement, to deviate from some development standards to accommodate specific project site constraints and conditions. As proposed, the project requests deviation from the following development standards: maximum height, maximum sign area, and billboard removal requirements. The maximum height requirement right now is 60 feet, and the project proposes a maximum height of 70 feet for the western sign only. The maximum sign area requirement is 672 square feet, and the project proposes a maximum sign area of 1,200 square feet. Finally, the zoning code requires that for every one digital freeway sign installed, the applicant must remove at least four legally existing billboard structures. The project proposes the removal of one billboard structure located on the project There is currently one existing billboard sign on the project site, as I previously stated. And additionally, the applicant requests the utter, the other deviations due to existing future impediments and features that reduce visibility from U.S. Highway 50, including Folsom Boulevard, a 20-foot-wide regional sanitation easement, heavy rail and SAC RT tracks, the future Rancho Cordova Parkway interchange, and fully mature trees between Folsom Boulevard and U.S. Highway 50. For comparison, existing signs along the corridor are within five feet of the freeway with fully clear view corridors. The proposed Mineshaft freeway signs will be over 180 feet from the freeway, so the requested deviations are needed to avoid visual impediments and improve visibility of the signs from U.S. Highway 50. Per the draft operating agreement, the signs will be operated 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The electronic message signs will be static and will have minimum display time of eight seconds. Brightness levels will be 0.3-foot candles above ambient light, and the brightness will automatically adjust up or down based on ambient light conditions. The city of Rancho Cordova will be provided access to a portion of the total available display time to allow messages of community interest, including public safety messages and emergency disaster communications. In accordance with CEQA, a draft initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for the required 30-day review period. Areas identified in a draft ISMND that required mitigation measures to avoid less-than-significant effects on the environment were air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and hazards and hazardous materials. Mitigation measures to address these less-than-significant impacts include emission controls and reduction during construction, bird surveys prior to ground disturbance, tree inventory and protection during construction, appropriate measures in the event of any archaeological resources are exposed during construction, and monitoring of any evidence of hazardous materials during site preparation and construction. The city sent out a notice of intent when the mitigated negative declaration was released for its 30-day public comment review period, and during that public review period, 122 email comments from residents of Gold River and four comment letters from outside agencies were received. As a result of comments received, there were no substantial revisions made to the draft ISMND that required recirculation of the document. The staff recommends the city council find the ISMND with mitigation measure that was prepared and circulated pursuant to CEQA for the project is adequate, adopt the resolution for the Mineshaft Digital Billboard Signs Conditional Use Permit and Minor Design Review, and approve the Mineshaft Digital Billboard Signs Operating Agreement. And we do have the project applicant team here for any clarification, questions, and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to make any, any commentary? We'll call you back up to answer any questions the public may have as well, but this is an opportunity to sort of give us the big picture.
Sure. Brian Cooley, representing the Community Council, Cordova Community Council. Just some brief comments. I want to thank staff, Arlene Jones and her staff in Darcy Gallard, for the three years to get to you this evening. A lot of times, these projects come on a brief agenda here on a February night, and it's, we've been working at this since 2021, so it's been a long process to get it to you this evening. And so a little bit of background, as most of you know on the dice, the Cordova Community Council's been in operation since 1959. It's played a focal point of convening discussion within the Rancho Cordova community prior to cityhood up until this day, and I think there's not a person in the room that probably hasn't experienced a Cordova Community Council, community event, whether it be the Fourth of July celebration at Hagan Park, the haunted house that was talked about on the Mineshaft property, one of the monthly luncheons that occurs here in the building, or the Christmas tree lighting. And I think with the growing community of size of Rancho Cordova, the expectations that Cordova Community Council to continue to bring these stellar community events to the broader city are increasing every year, and obviously, the cost increases every year as well. So the digital signs that we're proposing this evening would give the Cordova Community Council the long-term financial stability going forward in the future. I had the fortune to be involved with the previous property owner for a number of years, and as he retired, was looking what to do with the property, looked around for a really well-heeled and well-run organization that provides a lot of benefit to the community. He couldn't think of a greater organization, the Cordova Community Council, to donate the property to, and it's been a great opportunity for the organization. These digital signs are really the next step in that process to provide that long-term stability far beyond the tenure of the, of the current board members and current staff. And so that's, that's really the, the impetus for the two signs and the property. And this last thing I would say is, there's discussion early on as to why two signs and why in this location. There is a finite amount of market value for signs on the Highway 50 corridor, and if the signs don't come to the city of Rancho Cordova, they're more likely to appear in one of your neighboring jurisdictions in the city of Folsom or unincorporated Sacramento County. And so it's our belief that, that revenue ought to be captured here in the city of Rancho Cordova and be governed by the Cordova Community Council. And so, again, that's part of the big impetus behind the operating agreement, the deviations that we're asking for in your, your zoning code and also the sign removal process. There are, our team is here to answer any questions. Shelley Blanchard, the Cordova Community Council's executive director, Dave Nibbo with Prime Mountain Media is here, as well as Tiffany Wilson with RRC Engineering, and our CEQA consultant that did the mitigated negative declaration, David Rader from AECOM is here as well to answer any questions you may have. And so with that, we support all the conditions of approval and the staff recommendation this evening, and we appreciate your support and your eye vote on the matter this evening. We'll be happy to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Any question for the applicant? All right, let me take some public comment.
For this item, we have James Garcia. Following James Garcia, Helen Waylon-Bishaw.
Great. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I am opposed to the approval of the Mineshaft Digital signage project for several reasons. Our municipal code, Section 23.743.150, digital freeway signs, are very clear on requirements. They talk about the height, maximum height of 60 feet. They talk about the maximum size of each display being 672 square feet. They talk about the distance between signs. No digital freeway sign shall be located within 2,500 feet of any other digital freeway sign. They also talk about, for every sign, you need to have four removed. And the only way is if it is an existing billboard replacement as opposed to a new location. Looking at the standards, first bullet's not met. Two separate locations, one, only one location being a relocation. The other results in removal of 27 trees, not a billboard, for paying a fine of $30,442.50 because that's 184.5 inches of trees removed. Separate location, again, new location should not be allowed because, again, it's 10 feet above our standard height. All sides would be 528 square feet above our thing, 78.6% increased area. Distance between signs, the western portion sign is actually 2438 feet from an existing digital billboard, sign of the California Lottery. So again, we are violating our own code in that aspect as well. Same kind of measurement standard that the Kilgore property used. Since this project only pertaining to removal of single sign, and we're not relocating less than 300 feet from the easternmost sign, this project will not remove additional seven required. So that's the problem there. Caltrans also has a requirement for digital freeway signs. There must be an existing business activity within 1,000 feet of proposed display location on the other side of the freeway. The distance for the eastern proposed sign is located 1530 feet from Bex and 1819 feet from the Mineshaft Building itself. Has Caltrans approved this? One other requirement, Caltrans a requirement, display must be 500 feet from an interchange, intersection at grade or safety roadside rest if the highway is a freeway and located outside the limits of incorporated. Again, we have a pending intersection proposed on that location, that's why we're going to move the building. It's going to be built within 300 feet of the westernmost proposed sign. That's a Caltrans requirement, and that's not, does not even guarantee approval. So has Caltrans even looked at this? So again, we looked at this once before. We had residents come out before in 2015 to kind of help out, and that's why we got a freeway overlay, to mitigate this type of nature. Caltrans, they rule. Thank you.
Next speaker is Helen.
Hello again, Helen Waylon-Bishaw. I oppose this. I remember a few years back, we had a company coming in wanting to put a very tall tower-type billboard for businesses in the area. That was knocked out. That was knocked out because it did not comply with the ordinance. This proposal is a self-serving thing that makes the City of Rancho Cordova look like if it's something that the city wants, that it's something that's going to be approved, even though the height requirement and the measurements of the billboard are in direct violation. The fact that you have other digital signs close in proximity, you're ignoring it. I looked in one of the pictures, it appears to be a Sacramento Valley oak that will be removed because it's going to impede the aesthetics and the view of the digital board. We're the city of trees. Why would we take out so many trees to put in blight? The blight is these big billboards that go 24/7. I think if you're going to put a sign in, you must be in compliance with the current rules and regulations that drive the city to make decisions on private interests versus the city's public thing. Yeah, there might be money that it generates, so does that mean the city no longer will support the organization associated with the mine shaft once you get this digital sign in? I just think it's the worst thing to do because the public is not going to like it when they find out that the city-type businesses, which would be the mine shaft, are self-serving and the rules don't apply to it. So I am totally opposed to this. James hit all the ordinances, and to go in favor of this, you're doing a disservice to the community as itself. Thank you.
Mayor Sander, in addition to the two speakers that we just heard, we received two emailed public comments from James Garcia and Jim Garcia.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Applicants, do you want to respond to anything you heard in public comment? And while you're up here, there might be questions from the council.
Yeah, briefly, there was a reference by one of the speakers of a digital sign that was inside of 2,500 feet to the west of our westerly sign. That California Lottery sign that has a digital reader on the bottom is not considered a digital sign in the, in Caltrans's code in terms of signs that are near their right-of-way. So that sign, which is to 2,498 feet to the west of our westerly sign, again, it's very close within that 2,500 feet, but that's not considered an off-site digital advertising sign, even though it has a lottery reader on the board, so I just wanted to clarify that. The other issue, I mean, there was a lot that was kind of put out there. Again, I think within the staff recommendation for the operating agreement, that's why the City of Rancho Cordova has these operating agreements, much like development agreements, there is the community benefit section that talks about the rationale for the deviation from your code. Again, as was conveyed in the staff report earlier, our initial proposal was two signs that were over 100 feet from the study session we had a year ago. The sign on the eastern side came down to within your code for height and for square footage, and the sign in the west, given the future interchange that will be 300 feet off adjacent to the sign, still stated that 70-foot range, but still came down from the original 100 feet that we had proposed originally. So last thing I want to say is Caltrans has done a preliminary review of these signs. They do have, they do find them in accordance with their standards in terms of setback in spacing, and as part of the process this evening, assuming it was, the conditional use permit is approved, we would be submitting for a building permit and also a Caltrans encroachment permit as well. And so David Nibbo, who's here, who's worked on a number of signs in our region, can walk you through that Caltrans process if you want to hear that.
This process is actually required for that one to begin.
Correct, that's correct.
As I understand it.
That's right.
Okay. I guess I would just, I could frame this discussion a little bit. You know, I've probably been fighting billboards for 20, 25 years, about 25 years in Rancho Cordova, since when I was chairing Corpac. And we had proposals back then with ordinances not dissimilar from this one, where we talked about taking billboards down, but it was, you know, taking, I think in one deal back then, Lynda, you might remember better than me, but I think we took 27 billboards down in order to allow them to turn one of them into a modern billboard. But those were in the days when we had, well, Lynda used to talk about hundreds. But I was working in the era of when maybe there were 50 in Rancho Cordova. And now we're down to a handful. The idea that you could always exchange, you know, four for one is probably not economically feasible anymore if you were to pursue that. So ordinance might be a little dated, but it's dated because we've had a lot of success removing billboards from all over Rancho Cordova. The size variation, I think, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's just geometry. You know, if I held up something like this, a foot in front of your face or two feet in front of your face, you could focus on it and see it. But if I hold it up here, it's got to be substantially larger for you to have the same ability to see it because it's just farther away. And in the case of these billboard locations, Folsom Boulevard is between the lane you're driving on and the billboard, light rails between where you are driving and the billboard, and a canal may be at play in some locations. So when things like that are there, obviously the geometry is going to change. The perception, though, from Highway 50 will not be different. It would still appear to be the same size. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that's basically the size correction that has happened. It's just how far away it is. I think, as we've heard before, we've heard this item a lot of times, all billboards are going digital, it's just sort of a matter of time. Lynda may not like that particular conclusion, but I think that's where we're going. There's a finite market for them along Highway 50. If we don't authorize these sites, then likely someone else could, and someone else could monetize those, and those would not be a partner agency with the City of Rancho Cordova, would not be something that would benefit our citizens or our nonprofit community. It would just benefit some owner somewhere else. And so that's not necessarily the best strategy for us. I think actually this is probably the best possible arrangement for us, and I would even label this as being an entrepreneurial activity for which we have aspired to for a long time, not to get into the billboard business, but to be entrepreneurial about how we do government and how we work with our nonprofits. So I think this is a good example of that. As I understand it, the tree ordinance is fully in order here. Occasionally, things are built, trees have to be removed, trees are remediated, or payments are made to the city so that we can in turn plant trees elsewhere. Lots of projects have that happen because historic trees may not be in exactly the right location for everything that is planned or necessary in the future. So I also think in this case, there are some trees that would have to be removed by our eventual construction of the overpass. And there's also trees that the county, and Lynda's got some history here too, that the county has dealt with over the years that are adjacent to Folsom Boulevard that are problematic for a number of reasons. So there's a long history here of dealing with trees along Folsom Boulevard in this stretch. Lynda might be able to add a little more information to us for that, on that topic. But with that, I think this is our 10th hearing or so of this item, or 10th discussion or so of this item. If there are questions from council members for the applicant, this is a great opportunity.
I don't have questions, but I would ask again that we bifurcate the vote on the two signs.
Okay.
And this is a difficult situation to be in because I am extremely sensitive and supportive of the need for community council. There's two of us up here and some of our former colleagues, of course, who have been deeply involved with community council, and it is great to see them in the position that they're in today. And the need to create that long-term financial stability is very important. I also agree that this is definitely a community benefit. We don't, there's not a lot of organizations around that where we derive as much community benefit as we derive from the Cordova Community Council and have over the years. But having said that, signs are a problem for me. And I can support the sign on the east. I appreciate the fact that these are set back much farther than normal from the freeway. Having had to permit signs myself as a planner, I don't approve of the need to raise the one on the west because we have a freeway overpass going over it, so it's got to be above the freeway. I also, if you had sat in the meeting that David and I sat in this morning with the county and Caltrans, and the number of trees that they're obviously going to take out for their enormous, absolutely out of this world, Hazel Avenue project, I again am extremely distressed to see the trees going in order to install the sign on the west. And like I said, I do support the sign on the east. I do agree, and this is something probably for our planning department, when we started this process of taking down signs in order to put up a new one, we had come from a point where there were 240 4x8 billboards along the railroad right-of-way. And countless, I don't remember the number, David, of the very large billboards, including that giant thing that we had at Zinfandel and Folsom Boulevard that was four, two here and two here, you know, with a base that was as big around as this.
228 was the number?
Two, 240.
Oh, 2.
Little ones, yeah. And so we've come a long way, and there is no question that the practicality of finding additional billboards to take down has probably passed. Actually, within the city limits, I can think of only one potential, this one, but then one other potential, that's all I can remember. Okay, good. Yeah. And of course, if Dan were here, you know, channeling Dan, he would have concerns also because we, those of us with Corpac experience have definitely seen a different era in advertising. But like I said, I would just ask that we bifurcate the vote on the signage.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, so just a couple of comments, I would say. So to the public commenters, the ordinance is something that we adopted, but with our own discretion, we can decide whether or not we want to follow it. So it's a rule designed by us that we can make our own decisions on.
Also why it's a use permit.
What's that?
It's the use permit that gives us the ability to decide.
To decide, right. But we self-imposed the rule on ourself, which means we have the ability to, at our discretion, to override it or to not follow it. The other thing I would say too is that the last time we talked about digital billboards, I remember having multiple meetings with individual groups of people. And what was really fascinating about that, the first time that we approved a billboard and then the second one, that the groups came and they talked, and what was really fascinating was there was hardly any residents from Rancho Cordova in the room because the only people that would see these lived in Gold River or Carmichael Bluffs or further away, and they were coming in, showing me pictures from their backyard, and I had to look at them and go, you realize they don't work for you. Right? So there were a couple of people that lived in Sun River that came, that were neighbors of mine when I lived over there, that talked about it. But the fact is, I mean, there's two people that came here to oppose this today and have commented on half of the agenda already. Like, it's really fascinating to sit here and be talking about this and to have no public opposition coming in. I mean, I literally, I sat at City Hall multiple times with groups of 10 to 15 people that were really concerned about it, and even back then, they weren't residents of Rancho Cordova. So when I look at this, you know, I think, I mean, even the first one that we put in, I can't remember which one was which, but whichever one came in first, I remember when I was given the choice, I didn't choose the one closest to Hazel, even though that was the site that they moved to because somebody, some other subcommittee had said that they didn't like this one, and there was this idea that they like got robbed of their decision because the council changed their mind. And I looked at them and I said, I wasn't on council when that decision was even made. And that wasn't a decision. That was direction given by a couple of council members a few years before I ever got elected. So all of these rules are fluid depending on the needs and what we decide we'd like to do. You know, this is a property that we eminent-domained and are assisting the organization and moving the building and doing a lot of other things. They're a good partner of ours that we want to see continue to thrive, and maybe at some point, this is enough funding that they'll lower their requests from the city to fund some of their activities, who knows? Or maybe they'll just enhance more things that they're doing. But this is an investment not only in our city and an organization that is as valuable as any other nonprofit or chamber or other organization that's in this city. So to me, it's a no-brainer to be supportive of it, and the fact that literally, like, we had full-scale movements of people opposed to these in the past, and I have not received very many complaints at all about this project. So I'm happy to support it, both of them.
Stacy, did you say 122 letters from Gold River, though?
122 letters?
From Gold River?
Councilmember Budge, that was for the MND from Gold River, correct. That was for the CEQA document. We did receive about 122 emails from Gold River residents.
Okay, yes, thank you.
All right. Anything further, council? All right, with that.
Mayor Sander, did you want to close the public hearing?
I can. Anything further from the applicant? Anything you want to add? Seeing nothing? Staff, everybody comfortable? All right. Close public comment.
Okay, then I will move approval of the use permit and management agreement or operating agreement with the Court of a Community Council for the sign on the east.
Okay, so you moved the sign on the east. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Yes.
I'll move the, you did the one on the east?
Yeah.
I'll move approval of the sign on the west.
Second.
Councilmember Gatewood. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
No.
Vice Mayor Pulapati is absent. Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Now that we've done these, the county can't put in theirs right next to it, correct?
It's not county property.
If, yeah.
They want to put one, they want to put one, there's.
Like on the other side?
Yeah, right on the other side. They asked, they are looking to put one right next to it.
I think the challenge, we could hear from the applicant right here, the applicant's consultant, but I think the challenge they would face is that these two being approved are now ahead of them in line.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. So they can't put theirs next to ours now.
The other challenge they have is Caltrans has a requirement of 1,500 feet between digital signs. So the Caltrans standard is tighter than your City of Rancho Cordova standard, but Mayor Sanders is correct, based on where the property is located, if the county were to cite a sign in unincorporated Sac County, I can't envision a scenario that it's going to be greater than the 1,500 feet. So to answer your question, based on that Caltrans standard, I don't see a secondary sign coming in adjacent to these two.
Can they, because we're, because we just approved it, does that mean even if they were to approve it, like at their next meeting, they still, ours is the one that gets put in first, correct?
Your approval has no bearing on a county's approval for a subsequent sign, other than that 1,500 Caltrans standard that I cited. So your approval of these signs here tonight.
Makes it so they have to go 1,500 to even be able to do it now that they know we're putting a sign there, correct?
Correct. And my point is, is I think before you reach unincorporated county, you're beyond that 1,500-foot threshold. So and even, and I'm not sure what the measurement is across Highway 50. Dave could probably answer that question, but I think it's broader than 1,500 feet.
And then it'd be a serious economic question, like, could you actually?
Yeah.
Would the market bear one more?
Well, and that was the other point I brought up earlier is, and Dave can speak more to this than I can, but there's a finite market for these signs in the corridor, irrespective of the spacing. And so I think your action here tonight really kind of corners the market to some degree on the ability for proliferation of signs in the corridor. And again, David, this is his day-to-day business, he can speak a lot more intelligently on this than I could, so.
Brian, if you look at the, if you look at the staff report, the area directly across the, what's north of the, on the freeway, directly across from the west.
the, what's north of the, on the freeway, directly across from the westerly sign is, is Gold River Residential Homes. And the same is accurate on the easterly sign until you get to the Folsom South Canal.
What's the spacing from, if you were to go from the property line across the freeway?
Well, isn't freeway, Edgar, isn't freeway right of way like 150 feet?
We've got Folsom Boulevard, the right of way, the easement, the highway itself, the other side.
Mayor, councilmembers, absolutely, it's around 150, I think I want to be, say it's closer to 160 in that, in that general area.
Okay.
For the right of way for Caltrans.
Yeah, so then, so then the railroad corridor is 100 feet and Folsom Boulevard is approximately 85?
If, if I may, there, the spacing requirements for Caltrans is dependent upon what side of the freeway they are on. So there is the possibility that they could build it on the other side of the freeway because the spacing doesn't count on that side.
Well, the only place that they think, I mean, either, they would have to put it, they would have to put it in the parking lot at E-Hell.
Yeah, I, I don't really know, I'd have to go sit there and, and, and figure out from the geometry of where they could put it in through there.
Yeah, I mean.
But I think the biggest impediment, though, is that it's, it just economically, it's, it's pretty saturated. It will be.
All right.
Hey, Micah, how many sizes does this take us to? Since we lost two, 140 or whatever?
Four.
You mean electronic billboards or just any?
Just total signs in our city.
Total signs?
I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but we're kind of four electronic, but there's a handful, not very many left.
I think there's about four or five left of the regular statics.
I see numbers in the back, looks like seven is the, is the number.
So we went from 240 to 11?
Maybe to seven, I'm not sure. Is that the grand total, the grand total?
Seven.
Darcy's remembering that there's one.
So it's like the dilapidated cars we had out here?
Yeah, Darcy's remembering that there's one at the northwest corner of Sunrise and Coloma.
She's back, she limped up.
Yep.
She made it, she's almost there, and now.
Good evening, council. Yes, there's one at Sunrise and Coloma, but there's also some billboards that run along the freeway, so I'm counting the seven as all of those within our city limits.
You're right, all the little short ones.
Yes.
That are wide, but they're short.
Yes.
So I was told when I first came on council that we were never allowed to put a sign, not never, never. That's when you yelled at me, Linda, in a meeting.
That's right.
So I just want to know that you just voted for a sign.
That's almost.
And I'm going to make sure that on, listen, it was seven years now, probably to the date where I got yelled at for saying yes to a sign. And now you put one in, so.
There's only one Linda rule.
It was because of the enhanced public purpose.
There's only one Linda rule that ranks higher than that, and that's the palm tree rule.
That's true.
Listen, I just can't wait.
Don't want to go there.
Listen, we, we broke the sign rule, because palm trees are next.
Okay, we're going to move on to communications.
Moving on is a good thing.
We've totally lost our communications thread here. Maria, you're up with 12.1, if the clerk could read the item.
Yes.
I'm sure I did. Communications Strategic Plan.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. We are on item 12.1, the Communications Strategic Plan, and Maria is up.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Maria Chacon-Nestad, Communications and Public Affairs Director. I'm here tonight with our communications team to provide you with our annual update on communications. We last updated you, if you can believe it, in June of 2022. So tonight's update will actually cover 18 months versus the usual 12 months, which is when we typically do it. And we'll have the PowerPoint up in a, in a second here.
Ooh, fireworks. Unfortunately, I like the fireworks better, yeah.
These were our jazz hands. So this evening, we'll cover a few different things. First, the community, the city's communications goals and philosophy, how we measure our progress, what the data tell us, and of course, the focus areas for 2024, as well as some of the campaign and tactical plans. But first, I'll hand it over to Lauren for a short trip down memory lane.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lauren Burke, Communications Officer. As Maria mentioned before we begin our presentation, we thought we would begin with a quick recap of some of the highlights of the past year and a half.
Thank you. So now that you've seen some of the, the efforts of the communications team, we want to talk a little bit about our approach. And our approach differs from many of, in the government sector. We intentionally use the term communications instead of public information since public information is only one aspect of what we do on behalf of our community. Our city communications philosophy is more of a 360-degree approach that's rooted in strategy, and it's developed based on the outcomes of each project and program, many of, of which you saw in that video. And we measure virtually every aspect of our work so that we can analyze the data and improve year over year for our residents and our businesses. So to ensure that we are as proactive as possible, we work from a strategic plan that's updated annually, as well as quarterly work plans that evolve based on the needs of the city and our community. This allows us to be proactive and nimble while laddering up to the city council's overarching We're going to talk a little bit, bit about our data gathering tools and then show you that data. First, as you can guess, data provides us with an objective snapshot that gives us insight, insight into the type of content that are of high interest to our community. So content, think of stories, issues, projects, programs, et cetera. We have a number of ways that we measure the city's efforts. The first is traditional research. These include things like random samples. We also have the ability to conduct scientific panels and self-selection surveys. All of them have different uses and reasons for using them. We also measure our, each of our channels. We have a number of owned channels, for example, social media, website, newsletters, and we're able to measure these in a number of ways. We measure audience growth, we measure our engagement with contact, content, and then we measure anecdotal information. And I'll talk about, more about anecdotal information in a moment. We also have in-depth metrics for our digital content, such as our newsletters and our websites. So these offer us insights into what articles are the most interesting or what information on the webpage is the most read. So we, we also, as I mentioned, focus on anecdotal input. So for example, we read comments from residents, so we can note and address areas of concern or of special interest. Our team also meets monthly to review data to help us improve content and to understand our readership better. And then, of course, to course correct if we need to move forward in a different way. At this point, I'll handle, handle this over to both Danielle and Lauren, who will walk you through the last 18 months' worth of data.
This five-year snapshot shows the number of stories generated by the city's communications team from July 2022 through December 2023, and how it's grown year over year. There were 1,174 positive stories from July 2022 to December 2023 compared to 1,145 in fiscal year 2122. You'll see that positive news stories hit a new high post-COVID-19 pandemic, and the 20th anniversary events were covered extensively by the media and will be discussed in more detail later in our presentation. With business booming in Ranch of Cordova, stories including thermogenesis and solidine were widely covered by media outlets.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Danielle Hale, Communications Officer. This chart illustrates the growth across the city's various social media channels, including Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, LinkedIn, and TikTok. Overall, we experienced a 17% growth on these channels from July 2022 through December 2023, and in total, we have just over 48,000 followers. Each social media channel is unique and has a slightly different audience. To ensure that we're delivering our audiences with the content that they're interested in receiving, our team meets weekly to review an editorial calendar to plan content for city and RCPD channels, which I will discuss in just a minute. After some trial with TikTok in 2022, based on guidance from the FBI and others, our team decided to retire the page, which is why you don't see it reflected in this year's Here you will see the top three performing stories on Facebook, X, and Instagram, which were historically the top three most engaging social media channels. Although there are some similarities, there are also variations. On Facebook, the top performing stories were about positive stories in the community and new businesses coming to Ranch of Cordova, while on X, the top performers were references to events happening in the region and our local community, while on Instagram, our top performers were about local events and new additions to our leadership team. Understanding how content performs on each channel provides us with insights into what content to create for each channel. Here you will see a similar chart. This was the growth for RCPD social, social media channels, including Facebook, X, Instagram, and Nextdoor. Overall, RCPD channels received a 14% growth in followers from July 2022 to December 2023, and in total, there are over 61,000 followers. Similarly, you will see the top three performing stories for RCPD on Facebook, X, and Instagram. As you can see, there are more similarities across these platforms with slight variations. Across the board, the stories that performed well are people-oriented, included those about fallen officer Mark Staschuk and welcoming Matt Tumay as our new chief of police. Other stories that performed well included content about service to the community, such as photos of our police officers in the community and at events, press releases about police activity, and sentiments for Half Moon Bay and Monterey after tragic incidents occurred in those communities. We'd also like to talk about our digital e-newsletters. Ranch of Cordova News, the city's monthly e-newsletter, and Ranch of Cordova Events, the city's bimonthly events newsletter. Ranch of Cordova News experienced an incredible 44% growth in subscribers between July 2022 and December 2023, which comes on top of a 55% growth in fiscal year 2122. In total, we've more than doubled our subscribers to nearly 9,000, and we've also doubled our average newsletter open rate since 2020. This growth can be attributed to things such as new pop-up that we added to the website for ease news, e-newsletter signups, and promoting the newsletters through our social media channels and at events. We track detailed data about our newsletters, including our open rate, which is the number of people who have opened the email once it was sent to them. For Ranch of Cordova News, the average opens grew by, the average opens grew by 59%, showing our residents are taking the time to digest the news in these emails. Our open rate averages around 47%, which is substantially above the industry average rate of 36%. Ranch of Cordova Events also experienced an incredible 40% growth over the past year and a half on top of the 56% growth in fiscal year 2122. This again led to nearly doubling our subscribers and average opens since 2020. Average opens grew 44% as well compared to our last report to you. Now we are transitioning to, to talk about our two websites, one for the city and one for RCPD. In the past year and a half, RCPD's website was visited around 77,000 times, a steady growth of around 43%. A website visitor is essentially the number of people viewing our website or a specific page. Visitor numbers stayed quite consistent month to month. We had more than 400,000 visits to the city's website from July 2020 to December 2023, about a 40% growth rate from our previous report to you. With a steady number of visitors to our website each month, the city continues, the city website continues to act as an integral resource to our community. As you know, our website is a one-stop shop of information for residents, business owners, and others looking to find information on Ranch of Cordova. To note, we did have an anomaly within our data with our analytics site being down in January 2023. We're proud to have reached a 40% growth rate even with our analytics not covering January 2023.
So what you might want to do is just eliminate that data point. You can put a dash line between the two on either side or leave it blank. That's how I would present that, because otherwise it leaves a very big question about what happened there, and it's not relevant.
Which I was about to ask.
Yes.
And for our top 10 webpages for the city website, here's a breakdown by page visits. In addition to the large number of visitors landing on our homepage, visitors also sought out solid waste information, especially information about food waste recycling, information about department resources, events information, as well as new businesses and projects. Visitors also sought out licensing and permitting information, specifically using Ranch of Cordova Online, which was launched in March 2020 and has continued to be an accessible and useful resource for residents. Since our last report, the visitors to our Ranch of Cordova online page grew over 200%. On this slide, you will see a sampling of various publications that our team produces. This metric is one that our team began tracking this year and will continue to report out on. These publications include Flyers for Community Bike Rides, Good Neighbor Days, Vaccine Clinics and Other Events, Program Brochures, Postcards, the Annual Legislative Brochure, Placemaking Signs, and of course, our 20th Anniversary Book. In total, our team produced over 100 publications totaling over 164,000 fiscal print copies in addition to these being available on our website. On this slide, we've recapped the efforts behind promoting Ranch of Cordova's 20th Anniversary of Cityhood. Over the course of the celebrations, we received substantial media coverage that resulted in seven online stories, 55 broadcast stories, and three prints. In total, all 65 stories reached over 34 million impressions, which means this content was viewed or. which means this content was viewed or accessed over thirty-four million times. Additionally, our team received two awards from the Public Relations Society California Capitol Chapter for the twentieth anniversary book and campaign.
So here we have a snapshot of the goals we set for our communications last year as well as year-over-year growth by channel. We grew in all categories. However, for social media, digital content, and websites, we far exceeded our growth goals. As Danielle mentioned, we set a new goal this year and will be tracking publications moving forward as well. And our 2024 goals will remain consistent with last year's goals. So what did we learn from the data? Our growth across all channels, and more importantly, significant growth across all channels, means high audience interest in city content and a growth in our information as a trusted source. So what we do with these insights is we build off of them. And one of the things we're going to be building off of is continuing with our campaign and tactical models. These offer proactive and strategic efforts that are scaled based on what our community needs. For example, the new food waste recycling program requires behavior change. So we're using a campaign model for something like this, which includes multiple communications tools that provide residents with the needed information, things like direct mail, social media, newsletter amplification, media relations, a robust website content, meetings with our trash provider, input on the cart tags that they use, et cetera. It's a full-service campaign. We also are looking at building out new channels and capabilities, as I'll talk about in a moment. We're creating an understanding of projects and programs by being a trusted source of information, and we're continuing to focus on those high-interest stories to promote key projects and programs that are of interest to our community. And of course, we'll measure and allow the data to help us guide the content. So what's new in 2024? Well, I have to tell you, another exciting year for Rancho Cordova. We are going to be very, very busy, and it's going to be another really wonderful year for the city. On the storytelling front, something new is that we are moving to more short video, such as Instagram reels because of how well they are performing. You will also see that we've got a new year, and so that means new citywide banners with a new campaign that we will be unveiling in the second quarter of this year. I mentioned campaigns earlier. Here's just a sampling of some of the campaigns that we are already launching. They include support for our youth center, food waste recycling, phase two of that, and then what you've been hearing about numerous times so far, and that is Spring Service Day, which will occur on May eighteenth. We also have this little thing happening here, something that doesn't happen very often, and that is we have the National League of Cities President as our mayor this year. So we've got three hundred mayors coming to Rancho Cordova this summer, and so we will definitely be doing something with that opportunity. We, on the publications front, will continue to support our departments and our city services with meaningful publications. Our city manager also asked us to add a year-end report to the lineup, so we will be doing that, and that'll be new for 2024. We've been talking about a city podcast, and we're actually finally launching it. And this creates a new owned channel for the city. We will be launching it internally at first, probably in the March timeframe. And I want to say thank you to Cow Cap Films, which has helped us source our equipment and also will be training us on this. We are going to be launching more meaningful community outreach and conversations. You met Samantha Mott earlier this evening, and she's coming on board to help us with this aspect of communications and really to provide us with the bandwidth that we need to keep our community informed proactively on the projects and issues that are important to them. And finally, we always showcase some sort of a test and learn that we are stretching a little bit on this year. It's on everybody's mind, and that's AI. So we are doing some training in this area and also figuring out how it affects city services as well as our industry. This is a snapshot of our 2024 plans for Q1. You'll see we've got three buckets here, the proactive communications, the foundational communications, and the city council support that we've gone over in this presentation. What's not represented here is some of the reactive requests that we get from our media and other agencies and other partners that we have. So that's also something that we handle for the city. But as you can see, we're very excited for a wonderful 2024. It's going to be amazing, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Questions? So early in our history as a city, we had a lot of frustration with getting negative news in Rancho Cordova. It was so bad that, you know, at the launch back in 2002, if something bad happened south of the American River, odds are major media in Sacramento would label that Rancho Cordova. If it was something good, it would not be labeled Rancho Cordova. So the mindset was like one way, and regardless of where the geography was, we'd get blamed for it. So there was one spectacular day where on page one of the Sacramento Bee, you had an article about groundwater pollution at Rancho Cordova, what a horrible thing that was, coming from Aerojet's former uses, right? And that was in Rancho Cordova, and Rancho Cordova's in the headline. You go to the business section, and it's Aerojet hiring record profits in Sacramento County. So obviously, they're both happening here, but the bad one, that's our problem, Rancho Cordova. The good one, oh, that's a Sacramento benefit. That's great. And so we set out to say, we have got to first correct the geography, which happened with a lot of blood, sweat, and tears from a lot of people. And second, we have to create positive news stories. So we still have that strategy, right? Trying to create positive news. So I'm curious about with regard to like schools or kids or safety sort of issues that I think resonate a lot with people or fun, you know, a theme we've got in Rancho Cordova, fun, just community fun stuff. How do you go about generating positive stories? Or is that era somehow changed in the social media thing? Because I'm looking at your numbers, and it looks like actually getting media in sort of the old way we were thinking about it is probably harder and harder as it's just fewer and farther in between.
Yeah, that is true. Media relations, that's, you know, more difficult. There's, you know, we are competing with a lot of different messages, but we are very successful at getting media coverage. I would say the number that you see in this report out is reflective of the fact that we started to focus on some other areas. And so some of that became out of balance. So one of the things we'll be doing this year is sort of, now that we have a little bit more bandwidth on the team, we'll be focusing a little bit more on some of those regional stories through media relations. We have great relationships with our media here in Sacramento market.
I'd say that the bang that we all felt in those early years, in 2002 to 2010, was palpable because suddenly there were some positive news stories coming from Rancho Cordova and people who we knew would be like sort of shocked us. I had no idea there's something positive happening in Rancho Cordova, right? Like that's, I've never seen anything about that before. And it was just the impact of those positive stories. So really like sort of emotionally, physically stuck with me, you know, the value of that. And I think the big challenge we've got right now is schools. You know, it wasn't that long ago I was actually tracking our school districts and what sort of positive press they would put out on Rancho Cordova schools. And the reality was if the school district was putting out ten stories a month, we would get one or two of those, and the other areas they served would get the other eight or nine. And I don't know that that's actually changed that much, and it's their activity, not ours, right? But we're impacted by it. So the perennial question is, and I know I personally have collaborated with you a lot on this, finding something happening in the school, sending it to you, right? Because they don't. The school district doesn't think that way, at least for here. They might elsewhere, but not here. How can we be more proactive with regard to talking about great stuff happening in our schools?
Yeah, that's an area that is a focus of ours, and we talked a little bit about the way that we plan our content. And so we do meet very regularly, and we populate what we call an editorial calendar, you know, very similar to what you would do if you were in the news business. And so we have buckets of information that we're always trying to fill. The challenge is we have so much good storytelling going on that we really have created additional channels in order to tell it. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to launch the podcast. When we have owned channels, which are channels that we own the content for and that we're responsible for creating the content for, we have more of an opportunity to tell a pure story versus using other people's channels. So you were talking about, you know, the school district and them generating their own stories. So a strategy that we've used is we don't, we just don't wait for that outside information to come. You know, we reach out to our contacts, and in fact, we are going to be meeting with RCAA and so that we have a direct conduit with the sports stories so that you don't have to be sending those to me on a regular basis.
Just to kind of weigh in, I think some of the opportunities are, we do a lot of work with the school districts with our own resources. So it's not just the school district's story to tell. It is also our story to tell in the different ways that we're supporting RCAA, the school programs, the different pieces. So I think it's something that we participate in. So it's not something we also have to rely on the district or the districts to do, or we're actually investing in some of these programs that we could tell those stories for as well.
So I would say congratulations and continue to focus on the channels that you can control. Because, you know, in any given room, I always seem to be one of two people who still reads the Bee and does it religiously.
What's the Bee?
Yeah, see, and does it religiously. And it seems like they write about the most trivial things happening in Elk Grove or happening in Folsom or whatever, and they never write about anything that happens in Rancho Cordova unless, as David says, it was negative. And they still tend to do that, and we've, you and I have expressed concern about one particular writer at the Bee who seems to love to do that. But, and so I guess the message is we just have to ignore what shows up in the downtown media and rely on all of the stuff that you all have developed that you can control because that's what's reaching more people than the downtown media.
And I will say our citywide survey that we fielded last spring did show that media was one of the lower sources of information, and city-owned channels were, you know, a more prevalent source of information for our community.
It was interesting, all the communication focus on trash, recycling, that's sort of curious to me that there's that much interest in those topics. Makes me wonder, you know, what those questions are, why they're, what they're searching for. Are they looking for their recycling schedule, for example? Is it this week or next week? How much of it is that?
Because it's.
Or what do I put in recycling?
No, if you look at your, if you look at your recycling schedule when it does come out, you have to know whether you're an A or B in order to figure out, and most of us don't. When they transition to the A and B.
And to go to the website and figure it out.
I have no clue where you find out.
That's interesting.
I just try to remember, and you look at what else is out on your street, and you put up whatever's out on your street, and that's how you find out.
No, what you do is you put all of them out every time, and then you're guaranteed to get it right fifty percent of the time.
Then you call and complain the other one wasn't picked up?
Yeah, and then they come pick it up. That's the great part about it.
So I was going to say, just to answer that question real quickly, Solid Waste and Rancho Recycles, which are solid waste webpages, those are consistently our highest pages. We don't have the data with us, but we do have the ability to figure out what exactly they're searching for. So we have heat maps and things like that that we can take a look at to see what people are interested in. But for sure, the new requirements for the organics campaign have been driving people to those.
Oh, that's right. That happened with them last year.
And then we did a huge campaign last year so that people would understand what their responsibilities were. And now that we're in the enforcement phase of that, which really is about more education and less about, you know, true enforcement, people are, you know, really serious about making sure that they understand what their expectations are.
One would hope that the number of green cans being put out every week goes up, but it doesn't seem to. That's just anecdotal.
I will leave that question for Steve Harriman.
Garrett, did you have a question?
I put my green out every week.
You're supposed to.
Just in case. There might be something in there, might not. It's more of an adventure. When we first got here, I know we weren't doing anything when it comes to communication. I know we've grown a lot, so I love the direction you're taking it. I like to see lots of, the more media channels we can pick up, the better because, you know, it's all about being able to, when someone has to find something, being able to Google and pull it up. So if we can add another channel or two, if we have the group, it looks like you're finally starting to build some stuff, so it's not all on you every day. But yeah, I'm exceedingly happy. I like how you're starting to step in with the direction and how you've always been able to mitigate anything I put on the news. So we're.
That's why we're adding staff, Garrett.
Thank you, Councilmember Gatewood. It is really, truly a team effort. You know, it is. We all have a passion for this work and for making sure that our community understands the information that they need to understand, that they have it, and that it's easy for them to find and read. And yeah, so it's definitely a team effort. We thank you for that.
When I was at that sustainability conference at the golf tournament that I didn't see in Phoenix, one of the discussions that was fascinating to me was these staff members from other cities were saying, I would love to get more information out there about our recycling program, et cetera, but our city, you know, we only have, what was the number, two hundred and fifty Facebook posts a year, and I'm not allocated very many of those. As if there's only like one channel or, you know, multiple like, but like single voice. I'm like, you're looking at this all wrong, you know? You have your own voice. You can, the city could blast out a hundred things a day if we had a hundred channels to do it with, right? You just have to have the structural capacity to do that. But it was really interesting, the sort of artificial inhibitions that you see in other jurisdictions. And so some of those cities were really hurting for the ability to like get current information out to people, urgent information out to people because they weren't allowed the channel with which to communicate. Yeah, fascinating.
And I'll just say, you know, part of that is we did a lot more direct mail than we've done in the past this year, too, of just getting the information to the appropriate time at the right speed and to the entire community. And so I think these are adjustments you make, and I just really want to thank the communications team and their effort. And this isn't just the proactive work that you see before you, but there's also a lot of reactive work that happens along the way, too. And so this is just, you know, part of the overall package, and there's a lot of things that this team does on a very reactive effort, too, and unexpected things happen or different projects come in or, you know, things that we have to make sure that we're covering and supporting. So I really thank the team, too.
Yeah, you guys continue to do an outstanding job. So I was holding you up as a great example of what, you know, city communications ought to be.
It's no wonder they win awards.
Right, well deserved.
Thank you very much.
All right, I think that was item twelve point one. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is not any public comment.
Shelley in the back room isn't going to brag on how big the community council email list and open rate is. There we go, great partners, all on the same team. All right, we are going to go to item twelve point two. And it's not Halloween, but it is a very scary item because this is the update on California laws enacted in 2023. Technically, we're just receiving the report. Is there any need for a staff report on this topic?
I think that's up to the council. I think the legal team is prepared to have some good.
We're going to just highlight some of the more important ones.
Everybody buckle in a little bit.
We'll try to make it as exciting as possible and quick. But thank you, Mayor and Council, Anthony Amara, Deputy City Attorney. So as you said, we, every year, we look at the, all the laws that were passed in the last year and the ones that are going to go into effect this year and the ones that go into the ballot. So tonight. So tonight, uh, me and my colleague Palmer, um, picked a few to highlight just to go over very quickly. But like we said, there, we go into a lot more depth in the staff report on each of these. So I'm going to start with a couple of the, um, a couple of the more important issues. And the legislature really focused this year on mental health services and they signed three really significant bills, in my opinion, that address this issue. The first one being SB 326 titled the Behavioral Health Services Act. And much of this bill is going to be on the ballot, uh, in March and wouldn't be operative until 2026, but parts of it are effective immediately. So the Mental Health Services Act was previously approved in 2004 and it places a 1% tax on personal income over $1 million, uh, $1 million to fund mental healthcare services along with prevention programs for mental health issues in kids and teens. So if approved by the voters in March, uh, SB 326 would amend this Mental Health Services Act and allocate funding, um, state funding for housing interventions, full service partnerships, behavioral health services and mental health and substance use disorder prevention programs. So you'd see a really big extension of this funding on a local level. It would also establish local behavioral health boards to review community needs and work with local stakeholders to, um, address mental health needs of local communities. The next bill was signed at the same time as SB 326, um, and it's titled the Behavioral Health Infrastructure Bond Act of 2023. And what this would do is, um, it would have to also be passed by the voters in, in the March 5th, 2024 election, but, um, it would authorize a $6.38 billion bond with the goal of providing 10,000 new beds in support of housing units for those with severe behavioral health needs across the state. And, uh, $1 billion of this would be set aside for veterans with behavioral health needs. And, um, most significantly for Rancho Cordova, uh, this bill would include 1.5 billion earmarked to help cities and counties for these health or, uh, housing services. In addition, it would require discretionary local government approvals under SEQA for projects using this funding. Third, the, the other behavioral health, um, bill that I want to highlight is SB 43 and that's regarding conservatorships. So, uh, generally a conservatorship is the last resort judicial remedy, um, with the goal of providing essential aid and assistance to individuals struggling with substantial, uh, has to be very substantial behavioral health challenges. So the conservatorship process starts with a request from, from a county mental health department, um, to a court and, um, with the hope of seeking appointment of an individual to oversee another person's care. What SB 43 will do is it will amend existing law and, um, which addresses involuntary commitment and treatment of individuals who pose a danger to themselves or others due to mental health issues or are gravely disabled. So what this amendment specifically does is it broadens the definition of gravely disabled, um, under conservatorship law and will include cases where a person, uh, due to severe, severe substance use disorder, um, is unable to provide for their basic needs such as food and clothing, et cetera. So, uh, and chronic alcoholism is, would also be included under the extended definition and make somebody eligible for a conservatorship. So what this bill will do is give local governments a sort of a last resort, um, tool to address mental health needs of, of residents who can't care for themselves. Changing direction a little bit, um, is AB 1448 regarding cannabis enforcement by local jurisdictions. So as you know, uh, cities have the authority to license commercial cannabis businesses on a local level. Rancho Cordova currently does not have a licensing program. But this bill would be aimed at jurisdictions who do, or in the future Rancho Cordova ever did, um, it would be, it would apply to, to us. What it does, what AB 1448 does is give more of a monetary incentive to cities to adopt commercial cannabis licensing programs and enforce those programs themselves. Specifically state law provides that the penalty for a, uh, a civil penalty for, to enforce, uh, local cannabis licensing goes to the state's general fund. What this measure will do will, it will allow a 50/50 state-local split of the penalties recovered in actions brought by local jurisdictions. So if a city attorney, um, brought an action, a cannabis licensing action, the city would receive a portion of those proceeds. So revenues from these actions will provide funds to adequately cover the cost of enforcement actions and reinvest in illegal cannabis enforcement. The next law is ACA 1, um, local government financing. And this is a proposed amendment to the state constitution. And if it's approved by voters, it would adjust local tax rules to make it easier to fund infrastructure and affordable housing. So current law requires, uh, special taxes to be approved by two-thirds of the electorate in order to pass. This amendment, ACA 1, if approved by the voters, it would reduce the required approval to 55% um, to impose, extend or increase a tax, uh, proposed specifically for construction or rehabilitation of public infrastructure, affordable housing or per- or permanent supportive housing. So what it essentially does is lowers the, the voter threshold by 10% to get this type of tax passed on a local level. It would also create an exception to the existing 1% property tax limit that currently exists in California, uh, and it allow jurisdictions to impose an additional tax to fund projects such as infrastructure, affordable housing or permanent supportive housing. The last one that I'm going to cover is AB 1332 regarding accessory dwelling units. So this year, the legislature took further action to streamline the ADU process. What AB 1332 does is requires each local jurisdiction to develop a program for the preapproval of ADU designs and that has to be in place by January 1st, 2025. So preapproved ADU designs will have to be published on the local jurisdiction's website, um, along with the contact information for companies offering these preapproved plans. And, um, and once AB 1332 comes into effect, a permit for the proposed ADU using preapproved plans must be, uh, approved or denied on a ministerial level within 30 days. So, and as, as like I mentioned, um, it has to be in effect by January 1st, 2025. And, uh, local jurisdictions can also voluntarily adopt, uh, plans before then. So those are, uh, a few of the laws. I'm going to turn it over to Palmer to cover the others.
Thanks for having me. Thanks, Mayor.
Council. I will continue the train of housing approvals. This is, uh, a big focus of the legislature this year, um, with, uh, starting with AB 1033. This bill expands the authority of local jurisdictions, um, but it doesn't require them to adopt ordinances allowing the separate sale of an ADU and primary dwelling unit as a condo. Existing law required local agencies to allow ADUs to be sold separately, um, but had, um, different requirements to qualify the buyer if certain conditions are met, um, including that the property be developed by a nonprofit. So AB 1033 expands its authority to allow the separate sale of ADUs as condominiums without those qualifications. There are, um, a few different, uh, requirements as well. They have to comply with the Davis Sterling Common Interest Development Act and the subdivision map act, um, as well as, um, have a safety inspection, consent of any lien holders, notification to utilities and securing authorization of any applicable associations. Next on the housing streamlining, um, is SB 684. This is, uh, ministerial approval of up to a 10-unit housing project on small parcels. This goes into effect July 1st, um, and is important for the city based on, um, you know, the desire to, um, provide housing and be helpful for planning, um, to consider this. So this law requires a local agency to ministerially consider without discretionary review or a hearing, um, a parcel map or tentative map and final map for housing development that meets specified requirements. Some of those requirements include the project must contain 10 or few single-family residential units. It would be on a lot that's either zoned for multifamily residential, um, is vacant and zoned for a single-family residential development and the lot is no longer, is no larger than five acres and is substantially surrounded by qualified urban uses. And another exception is the newly created parcel cannot be smaller than 600 square feet. And the project has to have a primary purpose of the creation, maintenance of permanently affordable, single-family, multifamily residences. The next housing law is SB 4. This is the Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Lands Act of 2023. Again, this is important for, uh, the planning department and, um, considering, um, the build out of affordable housing. So this bill would override local land use and planning barriers, um, that inhibit the development of lower-income housing on parcels of land owned by independent education institutions of higher education or religious institutions. It's, uh, pretty specific to those particular land ownership, um, issues. And then, um, switching gears a little bit, um, we have AB 334. This involves, um, public contracts, um, so it's important citywide, um, and it relates to government code, uh, section 1090 regarding conflicts of interests. So this law is mostly important for, um, conflicts involving multi-stage or larger projects where, um, you know, you can have a contractor involved at one stage of a project who may be, um, providing advice to the city in one regard and then is conflicted out later in the contracting process. This is important because, um, the courts have given a pretty broad meaning to the making of a contract under government code 10, 1090, um, which prohibits members of legislative bodies and city officers and employees from being financially interested in a contract made by them in their official capacity. So this, this law would clarify that an independent contractor's involvement at an early stage of a public project as an advisor would preclude, uh, that would preclude the same independent contractor from participating in the projects, um, later as a contractor. It establishes that the independent contractor, um, who meets certain requirements, essentially having no involvement in engaging or advising on public contracting on behalf of the city would not be deemed a city officer, um, for contracts later in the stage of the project. And the last law that I'm going to cover is AB 821. And this is important for the planning department as well. This relates to, um, when there's a general plan update and a, um, zoning, um, regulation is out of date with the general plan. It creates a 180-day deadline for local jurisdictions to amend the zoning code to be, uh, to be consistent with the general plan. And this also gives residents and property owners a cause of action to enforce compliance with this requirement if, uh, it's, if the jurisdiction fails to update the zoning code within 180 days. So with that, I think Anthony and I are open for questions.
Questions?
Not a question, but, um, we received some information from a different source that is really of interest considering what we've experienced in the last, uh, a couple of months about a Senate bill, uh, 1100 by Cecilia Aguirre Curry, um, that amends the Brown Act and adopts government code 54957.95 that, um, reinforces the council's authority to remove disruptive people from meetings. And I mean, yes, there are, um, uh, ways in which the public process is protected, but in, and they make some suggestions about how to diffuse the situation. But on the other hand, it definitely gives the, um, it definitely, definitely gives a government body the right to not have to sit and listen to the kinds of things that we had to listen to. So I thought that was very interesting.
Comments, questions?
Do we have a receiving file?
We have a report, yeah.
Receiving file.
It's a nice report.
There's no public comment for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. That was my next question. Item number 13, any future agenda items? Seeing none, I think we are to adjourn it. We are going to adjourn in memory of Lloyd Johns, a former Sac State president and notable, was it trumpet?
Trumpet player.
Trumpet player. Something I actually aspire to if I ever get around to it. With that, we are adjourned.
My dad was a trumpet player.